Good morning. We are waiting for two other council members so we can begin the city council meeting. Councilmember Cardenas and councilmember Wesson to make their way here. In a moment, we will begin council presentations.
Call Mr. Weiss at this time. We're ready to make this very special presentation.
Mr. Labonge, I was waiting for Mr. Weiss is okay. So if he is ready, if I could, we'll go up.
Thank you. One minute.
Good morning. This is the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. We meet Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Today, the first Friday of the month, we are in Van Nuys City Hall in the San Fernando Valley. Normally on Friday, we have special presentations. And for our first and actually only presentation today, we have a council member, Jack Weiss.
And councilmember Tom Labonge.
I love my craft though. Nineteen-year-old.
Right here. Tommy?
I think you're a little... I'm still over there.
Making their way up to the podium, Madam President, are some of L.A.'s truest, most authentic, and most important heroes, the members of Air Operations from the Los Angeles Fire Department. Let's give them a round of applause as they make their way up here. I want folks to know, as Air Ops make their way up to the podium, that these are the people who fly the helicopters, who service the helicopters, who pump them full of water. These are the people who respond at a moment's notice and put out the most severe and difficult fires in this region. And if it had not been for their heroic efforts in early May, the Griffith Park brush fire could have grown by leaps and bounds. Mr. Labonge is here. He was there. He's going to tell us about it in a second. But over the course of four days, their four helicopters worked night and day. I don't know if it was nonstop, but it was probably darn near close to nonstop. You all worked at a superhuman level, and your machines worked at a superhuman level, which is not just about the pilots. It's about everybody who maintains them and supports them. And without the ability to maintain these machines at this high, high-quality, high-level, you know, disaster could strike. Because let's face it, these folks operate with absolutely zero margin for error. The things they have to do, the way they have to react at a moment's notice. There was a moment during the fire, maybe Mr. Labonge can tell us, when there were some firefighters who faced a potential serious injury, and the Air Ops folks swooped in and made a precision water drop and extinguished the fire that was about to threaten the firefighters on the ground. This is something, colleagues, that we all supported this year by putting additional funding in the budget to support these folks, buy some new machines for them, which are so desperately needed. And you all know, because you all have been out giving speeches in your districts about what a terribly dry summer this is. Mr. Labonge knows, because I learned this fact from Mr. Labonge, that the most significant month for fire danger in the city of Los Angeles is...
November.
November. We all remember that. Learned that from Mr. Labonge, which means that we have got another four or five months where we are not out of the woods by any stretch. And each and every day that goes by, each and every one of these folks will be there to defend us and to defend this city. I'm going to read the names of the folks who are here today. Then we're going to hear from Mr. Labonge, and then we're going to hear from Chief Rueda. With us here today from Air Ops, we have pilot David Nordquist, pilot Stephen Robinson, and pilot Glenn Smith. With us from Fire Station 90 Helitack, we have Omar Carrera, Dan Child, James Como, Stefano Filippelli, Jose Luis Garcia, Francisco Hernandez, Dan Matera, Rafael Ortega, Rene Peralta, David Rowley, James Satterfield, and Brent Tapia. From their Department of General Services, we have Chaim Amiel, Josh Escavell, Vince Garcia, David Honeywell, Jeff Mowry, Mike Patterson, and Dave Smith. And finally, from L.A. County Fire Department, Air Ops, we have Battalion Chief Anthony Marone. Before Mr. Labonge comes up, since I just read their names, acknowledge them again. They are just extraordinary, extraordinary leaders. And Mr. Labonge, this applause is also for you. Tell us about what they did.
Mr. Weiss, thank you very much. It is very important today, we take a moment, to thank this team of great city employees. This city of 4 million people has about 50,000 people who charge hard for all the 4 million and the others. And the consolidated effort that was made, not just on May 8th and 9th in the Griffith Park fire, but at other instances throughout the course of the years, you're really great superstars. I want to start with General Services, because they're unsung heroes. People don't know the work that you do, but to talk to the pilots, to talk to the staff, to know how you worked around the clock in that particular incident is to be commended. Let's give those people from GSD a great hand there. I want to thank them. And also on the Fire Department, this fire was started by a guy who was smoking a cigarette in the brush. And he should have been in the brush, and he should have been smoking. But he was. And he started the fire, and it came up, and they were... A citizen was driving downhill. He was right by the Children's Hospital, knocked on the door, Station 35, and said, "There's a fire in Griffith Park." And low and behold, this whole very, very serious matter, which I think, when is all that counted, they say it's 817 acres, I think it's going to be like 1,200 when they count from the toe of the canyon and up the hill. A very large, about 25% of the world's greatest urban park was destroyed. But it was not without injury to any firefighters, is not without any significant loss, but one home on Shannon Road of a $30,000 damage to their home. The skill and the determination of all of you are to be commended. And I know not all of you are here. Firefighter pilot Scott Bowman, if that's correct, who was the great pilot who, when Task Force 35 and Injured 56 were underneath the Hogback Bridge, which we just got built that covers the eastern slopes, they were trying to save that area and stop the fire from advancing through Aberdeen Canyon into the backside of the park. All of a sudden, the fire took off in a different way, and they scurried underneath that bridge, and pilot Bowman just laid down this beautiful drape of water that protected them and saved for serious injury. Although I talked to the firefighters, they did feel they were threatened, chief, but they heard your threat. If they ever do that again, they're in trouble. So, but that was one of the incidents, was captured, I believe, by KCal, KABC, who captured that that went around the world. I also want to thank the County of Los Angeles, because what is great about our city and our county is we work together. And we have that long relationship with Chief Freeman, the Los Angeles County. And Tony Marone is their chief here, and I know the many pilots of the county. I know Vance Kovik, I remember, is a county pilot. I know his mother lives in my district at Toluca Lake. He once landed his helicopter, because I saw it at another fire, Jack, on a big rock. I guess I shouldn't tell in front of the chief, but he landed that little skid there, and off came a crew, the fire crew, to help, you know, abate a fire at that time. What skill and determination. And also, I know Mr. Cardenas' support and Mr. Alacon's support for issues in the north, east San Fernando Valley, especially when it comes from children. The helicopters fly also to Children's Hospital, Los Angeles, and Mr. Garcetti's district right by our house, bringing children to the need there. And you do that with such skill and determination. And Steve Robinson, come out here. I just want to do this to you, Steve. Steve is a great firefighter pilot. He's doing a special program, you may saw it on CNN, where it talks about mapping and intensity. Also, Bill Robert... Bill Rosendahl. Steve led us there on Air Three. But Air Three came out of the sky one day, and it took three of our firefighters and one young lady there. And Steve managed to be able to land that helicopter in a piece of grass in a forest of Griffith Park about right there, which would have saved more people. Steve, you're really a hero, and I thank you for your work to Los Angeles. Mr. Weiss, thank you for bringing us all together, because these are the real heroes of Los Angeles. These are the people who serve our city on a moment's notice. I know I stopped by 39's, and I asked them what was going on, all that commotion on the street, and they said, "Well, you'll solve it, councilman." And I said, "No, no, I'll solve it. I'll call 911 and get the Fire Department of the great Los Angeles City and County Fire Department to come and help." Let's give them all another hand now.
Thank you very much. Steve, thank you. Steve. Can hear from Chief Rueda.
I wanted to take the opportunity to thank both Councilmen Weiss, Councilman Labonge. And Councilman Labonge explained it rather well. It is an orchestra. It really is. Our pilots really lay it on the line, very dangerous work, flying in the smoke over fires, very dangerous work. But we can't do that without the support of our mechanics, because no aircraft operation runs without its support. And General Services, that day of the Griffith Park fire, recalled in people, moments' notice, long hours, and kept those aircraft in the air. And I can tell you, one of the other unsung heroes here is our task force from Fire Station 90. It is a ballet, to see it, our heli spots that we have around the city of Los Angeles, the movement of aircraft in and out in a safe manner, where they're filling with water, they're filling with fuel, so that the pilots can keep sustaining that firefighting effort. So it really is a ballet, an orchestra, and these guys are the best in the world. And we also do have that relationship with L.A. County, where we do support each other. And I can tell you, nobody does it better than we do it here.
That's right. You're good, Joe.
And Mr. Weiss, Mr. Weiss, we do have two colleagues that would like to make comments. Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Alacon.
Thank you, Madam President. This is music to my ears, talking about an orchestra. Obviously, the fire season is about to come, and we've been in a fire season even though it isn't officially the fire season. I want to thank Mr. Weiss, because he and I were doing the Caltrans, the Fire Department, about these open spaces that need to be done. I was with the Fire Department, both the city and the county, yesterday with Supervisor Yorslowski, were working together about tsunami protection and wave protections over at the beach. There's joint efforts between the various bodies, and that's fantastic. But most importantly, when we were on the Budget Committee, Mr. Parks, with his great leadership, we did put more money into this, because my district, which is the 11th, has all those mountains and hillsides, just like Jack, just like many of us do, who have the canyons and the hillsides. And of course, you're at Griffith Park, which we all love so much. And I just want to thank you all, but the days ahead are going to be absolutely important. And whatever additional support we can give you, we want to give you. Thank you for protecting us and being there for us. Bless you all. Thank you.
Councilmember Alacon.
Yeah, I too want to rise to thank all of the helicopter units for all the work that you do, day in and day out. But I would be remiss if I didn't take advantage of this opportunity to remind the folks, particularly in the San Fernando Valley, that we do not have a pediatric trauma care unit, which is the reason why we have so many operations in the... Particularly with the Fire Department. My son was flown to Children's Hospital in 1987. He succumbed the next day, but because he didn't make it within what they call the golden hour. If we can establish a pediatric trauma care unit in the San Fernando Valley, we can get more kids to traumatic response within an hour and save lives, and reduce the jeopardy that we place our personnel in, in having to fly. One of the very last motions I introduced, in fact, it was... motions I introduced, in fact, it was the last motion I introduced when I left the City Council in 1998, was a motion to improve the secure, the secure devices to ensure that we did not lose more firefighters as we did in 19, I believe it was 1998, when, when three firefighters and another person were killed in a tragic accident. So, notwithstanding all of that, I think it, it points to how important the service you provide is and how dangerous it is, and, and how much we appreciate what you do. So, thank you very much from, I say that both as a public official, but also as a dad. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I'd be remiss if I didn't stand and congratulate these valid lawyers and fighting fires. I started my career actually in high school as a volunteer firefighter in the La Habra Heights Volunteer Fire Department. And I can tell you, I was up in the hills more than once, and the county guys came along and dropped Foscheck on us and, and saved our, saved our, saved us. So, I want to say, but I came out, when I moved to the Valley in 1973, it was two years after, as I recall, 1971, when we lost 700 homes in Chatsworth in a fire. And that was when we were just beginning our air operations fleet. I think it was in the late 60s, you got your first little, those little helicopters. Now we have a very large, one of the largest municipal fleets in the world, and incredible what you do. We had a chance to see the difference between '71, when we lost 700 homes, and two years ago in the Porter Ranch fire, when we lost one little garage, a little outhouse-type garage. That's the difference. And the difference is the Air Ops people, the helicopter fleet and all the maintenance people that keep those things flying. I stood up there and watched you guys attack those hills, where we couldn't get our firefighters up those hills. They're very steep inclines, and it's very tough to fight those kind of fighters. But you guys came in and took care of what they couldn't do, and stopped that fire from moving, stopping from going to the sea, as it often does, saved homes, saved lives. It was an incredible thing to see. But what really impressed me, and you talked about the county, when the county airship set down, our guys kept flying. And that's, and the winds were heavy, and it was getting dark at night, and you guys kept flying because you knew how important it was to stop the progress of that fire, because the history of that area, when it starts in Chatsworth, it jumps down to Dennis's district, and it jumps the freeway, it's gone to the sea. And this time, you stopped it, and you showed what you can do. You know, it was the Air Ops people and the people in our helicopters that did it. So, God bless you for your bravery, for your, all you do up there, for the people at Chatsworth who are hit by these horrendous fires every few years. We feel safe now, and we feel safe because of you. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And just so happen, a few weeks after that fire, had scheduled my flyover to look at some of the areas in my own district, and we took a ride out there. And when you see some of those homes, literally up on a mountain, and all around them has been burned, you see the precision in which our firefighters are able to respond to that. And it was really pretty incredible. So, thank you, Mr. Weiss and Mr. Labange, for the acknowledgement today. Particularly, thank you to all of you who help save lives and property in the city every single day. Thank you very much for that presentation, Mr. Weiss and Mr. Labange. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Alacon, Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and accornd, Madam President.
Thank you. First item of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Wesson moves. Mr. Alacon seconds.
Commitatory resolutions for approval are the next item.
Those will be approved.
Madam President, would you like to go through public comments now?
Actually, I'd like to go through the agenda first, and then we will go to public comment.
Okay. First, we have requests to consider. There are, there is a request to continue item number 14 to August 7.
That will be continued to August 7.
Next, the Bureau of Street Lighting request to continue item number 26 to August 15, and that would make the new hearing date October 19, 2007.
Okay, that will be the order.
Next are items number 1 through 6, and those are known as for public hearings. Items 1 through 5 are street lighting ordinances. The recommended council action is to close the hearing and adopt the ordinances.
They will close the hearing and adopt those ordinances. Need to open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next item.
Madam President, since these are ordinances, they will be carried over for one week.
Thank you.
Next is item number 6, and that is also street lighting related. The recommended council action is to continue the hearing and the ordinance to August 17.
That will be the order. Next item.
Next are items number 7 through 19, with the exception of number 14, and those are items for which public hearings have been held.
Colleagues, do we have any specials from items 7 through 19? Any specials? If not, Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next item.
Next are items number 20 through 36, with the exception of number 26, and those are items for which public hearings have been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Thank you. And we do have cards on items 32, 35, 36, 40, 41, and 42. And since public hearings have not been held on those items, those items will be called special. Any other specials? Which item? 41. Okay. Any other special, excuse me?
Madam President, 40, actually, the 38 through 42 are for the special agenda, and we need to call the roll if you want to do that.
Okay, then we'll hold on those. So, you're through, through item 36. Any other specials, colleagues, through item 36? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next items.
Next is item number 37, and that's on the continuation agenda, and that is the item that, where a public hearing has been held.
Anyone want to call that special? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
That item's been approved. Next items.
Madam President, would you like to go through the special agenda now?
Please.
Alacon, Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and accornd, Madam President.
Thank you. First item.
First is item number 38 through 39, and those are items for which public hearings have been held. Item 39, there are two reports on a file, a motion is required to, for this item.
Mr. Parks.
We have an amending motion on 38 that basically adds funds to the year-round shelters, which was a commitment that the council made during budget hearings. And it also is asking that funds be moved because of a delay in funding for the new image. And so, that amending motion has been circulated.
It has been circulated?
Yes, 38.
Have we been circulated on 38? I don't think they've seen it yet, so we'll hold that on the desk till we see the actual written motion. On 39, the two committee reports.
On, on the 39, we'd like to move the combined budget and finance and personnel committee report and receive and file the EE report.
Okay. That will be the order. So, 38 has been called special for the amending motion, and 39, as requested by Mr. Parks. If we could, Madam Clerk, open the roll on 39, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
That's, item's been approved. Thank you. Next item.
Next are items 40 through 42, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required to consider.
Thank you. We do have cards on each of those. And Mr. Rosendahl, which item did you want to call special again? 40 or 41? 41, okay. And Rosendahl's called 41 special. Any other, I guess, no other specials? Those will be moved to the regular agenda.
On number 40, there's also an amending motion to make a, a, move a small amount of money for a Rita Walters center. So, that should be circulated.
Okay, great. And we do have cards. Next item, Madam Clerk.
That would bring us to items called special.
We will go to public comment. I will call each of your names, and if you could come to the podium. The first is Sarah Fisk, followed by Patrick Duff, and followed by John Reinhardt.
Hi, I understand I only have limited time, so who's got the stopwatch?
You have two minutes, and the clock you can see there on the podium.
Oh, I see. There's the clock. Okay, thank you. Well, I want to address an area that is so often overlooked. What, what I see in our, our area here, particularly around the Van Nuys area and its surroundings, where we have the economically needier people, what we have is a real wasteland of culture. We have absolutely no place that we can perform or have an orchestra come in and perform for no charge or free for our local people, so that they can hear something besides the din of the music that we so often hear in restaurants and in the area. I, I have no problem with various kinds of music, but I, I have been involved for 30, for about 20, 15 years now with an orchestra in the San Fernando Valley, has been for years, really requires, requires a venue here, so that we can play some of the great music and some of the, and show some of the finer arts that our young people, many of whom have never heard before. We have been doing special, we've been taking our orchestra specially to the junior high schools and high schools in this area. And you have no idea, when I ask for a show of hands, has anyone ever seen a symphony orchestra? There might be two or three. Now, this is not right. A society cannot grow without fine music. With, thank you, thank you. A society cannot have the depth and the breadth that it requires for doing the wonderful, kind, and good things in life. All we have now is angry music. We have nothing but anger in this society. Let us bring you some Mozart, some Beethoven, some beautiful arias from, from the beautiful opera.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. If you could just conclude.
I want to, I, I, I'm going to see, see the, the five, seven council people who do have this. I know Ms. Grul, you have been so kind. She even attended one of our events. And a number have also...
So, if you, if you distribute that, the guards will be able to distribute it to our council members. I'm sorry, we have to go to the next speaker.
Just want to make sure I got everything here.
Okay, thank you. Our, our next speaker is Patrick Duff.
Good morning, Council. Councilmembers, I've come to you and spoke to you several times now on behalf of different medical marijuana collectives in the city. And just last week, you guys voted to pass a moratorium at a time when medical marijuana dispensaries are being closed down by the dozen every week by the Drug Enforcement Administration. And I'd appreciate it if the council could pay attention to me over here. That'd be great. We do pay your salary. We did vote you in. We can vote you out. Last week, I watched Councilmember Parks basically say that the federal law supersedes state law, so he couldn't, in goodwill, vote for anything that would have to be, have to do with medical marijuana. But the problem is, you're not a federal official, you're a state official. And we voted you in, and like I said, we can vote you out. But the problem is, we have what's called a referendum in this state, which is more powerful than anything in this state.
And please direct your, to the whole council.
A voter's referendum can only be overturned by another voter's referendum. That means Prop 215 can only be overturned if the voters want to overturn it. Okay? And we're not going to overturn it. It's here to stay. There's 13 other states that have accepted medical marijuana, okay? About a month and a half ago, two months ago, I came to you. Councilmember Rosendahl said he'd demand investigation into the Karma Collective. There's been no investigation there. We keep hearing people saying they're, you know, publicly support us, but there's been no public resolution drawn on paper. So, what I'm asking for the council today is to actually draw something on paper, saying that you support the local medical marijuana collectives that are in compliance with Proposition 215 and SB 420. Because at this point, what we really feel is that you are stepping on our throats while the DEA is putting a gun to our head and robbing us by supporting the officers, the DEA officers, with 40-some officers at the CPG raid. So, the only people that got arrested that day were protesters, when the real people that should have been arrested were the DEA agents who are robbing people.
Thank you. John Reinhardt, followed by Noel Weiss, and followed by Dave Elliott Zumadog.
Thank you. Ladies and member, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, please can I have your attention, Mr. Parks, all of you people? My name is John Reinhardt. I've been in this city for 40 years. Nine months ago, I was diagnosed with end-stage renal failure. I have a catheter in my chest, and I have a fistula in my wrist. I depend on 22 medications a day that do absolutely hardly anything for me that medical marijuana doesn't do for me. I don't need to take all these medications. I need to smoke my medical marijuana. I'm not a drug addict. I'm not some hoodlum on the street. I'm a tax-paying United States California citizen. My mother, my father, my forefathers were all from this city. And I demand that you people do your job and protect the rights of the people in this city and this state. It is your job. And if you have any, any, any compassion in your lives, i- it's not fun to go to sleep every night and wake up every hour to take another pill and get sick every day. Everything I eat, I throw up. I smoke marijuana, and it doesn't do that to me. It's the only thing that doesn't do that to me. And I beg you people to listen to me. We are not drug addicts. We're not heroin addicts. We're not crackheads. We're not, we're not people on the streets. But I'll tell you, if you, if you outlaw this, if you make us go underground, we will. You'll never get rid of medical marijuana. It'll never go away. We'll get it from somewhere. But we urging you, please, hear our cries. We need your help. We need you to do your jobs, what you were voted in to do, what you took an oath to do, and that's protect us, protect our rights. My doctor knows what's best for me. I'm sorry, but none of you folks before me are doctors that I know of, and you don't know what's best for me. But my doctor knows what's best for my health. And my health is more important to me than anything else in this world. And if my doctor says something is good for me, then please, let it be. Get the DEA off our backs. Do your job, please, 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 I beg you. Thank you.
Thank you. Noel Weiss, Zumadog, John Hendry.
Councilmembers, good morning. In light of all of the discussion and debate here, I just want to throw in again, a, a plus or an, or a, an endorsement of the idea of character. Greeks, again, I've said, character is destiny. I don't think that this council gets stronger fighting the easy battles. I think the council gets stronger fighting the tough battles. And what we're talking about last week, or last month, rather, I praised Herb Wesson, deservedly so, for what he did for Chuck West in terms of finding that $5 million. I think this month, in terms of doing a Janice Han, Wendy Grul, I think, at least should be entitled to some credit for the fact that she brought the 245. She didn't take a stand on whether it's a project or, or a tenant improvement. The bottom line is, she nevertheless, in bringing it, forced a debate against interests...
I did say it was a project, sir.
Excuse me? Oh, you did say it was a project. Fair enough. Good, you took a stand. Way to go. Okay? And, and basically, that's the bottom line. Okay? In other words, we've got to have leadership that basically brings out the best in people. We need to have these ideas debated. Mr. Smith, I appreciate very much the fact that now we're going to have a debate, whether you vote for it or against it, doesn't matter, on these ALIS Act reforms. It's really important that the people know where you guys stand on these issues, because in effect, the state legislature does listen to what the city of Los Angeles basically says. Going forward, we have these issues, I think, more importantly, on these, on this density issue that's coming up. Mr. Alacon, by the way, it's important that you have these meetings regularly at your committee. We need these educational reforms. Ms. Han has her motion on charter funding. You have to schedule that. We got to move forward on educational reform and innovation. We had this discussion back in May. I challenged you at that time to say, in essence, if we're in the same spot a year from May that we are in today, you will have failed. I don't think you're that kind of a person. I know you can do it. I have every expectation of your capability of doing it. We got to move forward and basically make it happen. And on these, and on this density bonus issue, I'm very concerned about ramming this stuff through, because what happened the last time they reduced density, or increased density, rather, the middle-class tenants of the city got screwed. And basically, that is something that we need a debate on. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Zumadog, followed by John Hendry, followed by Ragaya Malik.
Surprise, and good afternoon, good morning, and good evening, Los Angeles. My name is Dave Elliott. I've come here for the past year and four months under the premise of Zumadog. And not only that, but many of you know me from public access TV for seven years. I've protected my identity like Gene Simmons of Kiss. I've never been photographed publicly. And the reason I'm doing this, the reason I'm doing this is to show that I'm willing to do something very uncomfortable outside of my present level of comfort, to try to enact change and to ask that maybe everybody, everybody in the community, this side, this side, you know, I've sat here, y'all know what I've been doing for the past with the hat and glasses. And, you know, people say, "Well, he's out there. He's doing that. That's good. He's doing it. You know, I couldn't do that." Well, you know, I'd like everybody else to help, come join me on both sides, because there's real change that has happened over. The people don't want to participate because they don't think it matters. They can come here, and you guys don't listen, and these people... They can come here, and you guys don't listen, and these people, you know, but I've seen some real encouraging change in this city. Noel Weiss, who was just here, single-handed, not single-handedly, with people like Jane Usher and City Council and everybody, there has been change regarding the housing policy. New laws, tenant relocation fees, old laws being enforced, unbelievable. Noel Weiss, we need a round of applause throughout the city, I want the whole city to be cheering, and for City Council for doing it. That's a major thing, a 20-year thing that's happened. Also regarding Chuck Tenon, you know Chuck Tenon, he got displaced, the middle-class homeowner, and there's $5 million in federal grant money that was sitting there. He talked to Herb Wesson, Herb had it transferred to the city's policy. Now Chuck Tenon's in the place, and there's $5 million available to people of Los Angeles now when they get displaced because the city has to build new housing. So now there's $5 million, and thank you, you had this side with Herb Tenon, going over to this side with Herb Wesson, they did something about it, $5 million for the people. I'll be writing about these things on my website, zoomatimes.com, and you can see my article in L.A. Weekly with Homer Simpson online. Thank you, city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. John Hendry, Rugaya Malik, and then Brett Stone.
Yes. Okay, members of council, something a little lighter, but still not less serious. I'm John Hendry, I'm from the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, and I have a concern about a piece of property that the city is putting up for sale. It's kind of an odd land deal that bothers me. I have some pictures here that I'd like to distribute for everybody to show. There's talk of selling an old 1925 public library a block west from here. It's perhaps the oldest city building in the San Fernando Valley. It's a unique building. It's very reminiscent of Union Station. It may have been done by the same architects, it's a mini version in a sense of Union Station. It was the old city library in Van Nuys till 1964, and people haven't seen it since 1964, the people of the community. So they could be a little concerned that it's just been put up on the market, perhaps for a million dollars, because they don't remember it, they haven't seen it. It's part of history, it's one of the more unique public rooms in Van Nuys that they have never seen. It has, I remember, it is a 10-year-old, and my reminiscences may be a bit inflated with time, that it's a little better than it looked. But as a member of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, I wanted to see it before the city put it up on the block.
Bravo.
And since the public hasn't seen it, and the real estate people have seen it perhaps, there's this odd sense that this is the kind of interesting funky old building that's going to go straight to HGTV. And we'll all be laughed at when somebody says, I bought a cheap building from the city, and I've got $5 million in value out of it.
In history.
Yes. Very simply, public buildings that are sold are lost forever. They may still be there, you may never get to go inside again, you may never think of another use for it. I think the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council wanted a better chance to have a look at this building, to think about it, to think of better public uses than putting it on the market.
Thank you. Malik, Magaya Malik, followed by Brett Stone, followed by Miriam Fogler.
Good morning, city council members. You may not remember me, but my name is Rukhaya Malik, and I was here three months ago prior to my trip to People-to-People Student Ambassador Programs. When I was here three months ago, I heard an idea about a food collection drive from Councilman Greg Smith. I thought about that idea, and I used to attend Madison Middle School, and we had a program called the Healthy Start Program. But that program now is privately managed, so that is now gone. My idea is to start a food/clothing collection drive based in Madison, where I will collect canned food and clothing to help the less fortunate at Madison. I also plan to donate a percentage of the food and the clothing to the Salvation Army and local food banks. I came here today because I was hoping that you would support me with flyers, if you could put up advertisements on your website, if you could help me with the printing, I would also need volunteers to help collect the food from local venues. So in whatever area you can help me, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you give the information to our officers here, they'll make sure that we get the information as well. Please make sure our office does, since Madison's in our district. Thank you. Yes, Brett?
Good morning, city council. My name is Brett Stone, I'm a medical marijuana patient here in Los Angeles, I'm also a registered voter. I know you've done a lot of work on the moratorium that was recently instituted here in Los Angeles, and as you know, the DEA has just basically made you impotent and disregarded the wishes of the L.A. City Council. I don't have an answer, but it seems like at this point, if we're going to resolve the medical marijuana issue, it's going to have to be at the federal level. And as the City Council for the city of Los Angeles, I'm asking you to consider calling in the congressional delegation that represents Los Angeles and calling them before City Council, and asking them to represent the citizens they represent, and ask them why they're not pushing to have the federal government stop spending money raiding medical marijuana clinics. The second issue I wanted to talk to City Council about is last Friday, you were made aware of an LAPD detective, Dennis Packer, that was in the DEA raids wearing DEA raid wear. On Friday afternoon, after you were made aware of that, LAPD denied that it was Officer Packer, Detective Packer. The video is on YouTube, and I want to let City Council know that I will be emailing each and every one of you this weekend, the video of Detective Packer. And I'm coming back before you, and I want answers as to what an LAPD detective was doing in DEA gear when the LAPD, one representative says he would not have been in DEA gear, and another one says he was not in DEA gear. So let's get to the truth about LAPD. They've lied, and let's see what the truth is. And if the city is asking people, the government, to stand down on raiding dispensaries, shouldn't LAPD stop participating? I mean, it's common sense. So look for the email council representatives, I'll be back before you next week, and I do hope you'll give me an answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, before we go to the next.
I'll answer that for you. Detective Packer is also a DEA officer. He's been trained by the DEA, he is certified as a DEA officer, he carries a DEA badge, and in that day, he was acting as a DEA enforcement officer, not LAPD.
Sir, and this is not a back and forth, this is just factual information that he was providing. Thank you. Miriam Fogler.
Obviously, we're having a problem with the governments from the city down up to the federal, we're having problems everywhere. And we need to return to basics, that we're here to serve God. Even though we're living for God, we need to remember that the God consciousness is in you, is in your mind. So what you're doing here, you're going to reflect on what the next generation's going to have, and what God's going to do to you when you leave this world. And I don't want to get into religion, but, you know, this is the essence of ethics and morality and values. And I've lived here all my life with my family, my parents, my father was a cantor and rabbi now, and my mom was a canteress. Beautiful voices, they love to come here and sing for you sometime, for all of you. They've got beautiful voices. And I just, to say this, that even Ernie Bernardi knew them. You remember the legend, Ernie Bernardi with his saxophone? I have his tape at home. And I'm telling you, he was a spiritual inspiration of this horseshoe. And he put a cap on the downtown redevelopment, 2.6, and this is why we're having so many problems here locally. And it just goes on and on with the housing crisis, because the CRA needs to be taken over by the City Council, and the city planning needs to take care of it, need to bring the public money back, the public land back under the City Council control. And the CRA is going to have to be under the control of the City Council, not the other way around, and getting contributions from the CRA. So the reason why I'm bringing this up, because I just was bothered this the other day, again, about water and food, from a gardener named Officer Ruiz, and I told him I played, everybody's drinking water here, it's going to have to be for all or for none.
Thank you very much. We have other speakers here, but we do have some from downtown as well that have come forward. John Farion, downtown, who'll be followed by, I think it's Laven Bond, followed by Michelle McFarland. Yes. Mr. Farion?
Mr. President, Ms. President, Councilperson Weezer, members of the Housing Committee. If you don't mind, I should like you to stand behind my eyes to show you what I see. My name is John Farion, and I'm a resident of the Hayward Hotel in Councilperson Weezer's district downtown at Sixth and Spring. The Hayward is one of the last, if not the last, project-based Section 8 programs in Los Angeles. Now, through some Faustian bargain, the Hayward has been prevented from renewing its project-based Section 8 status, and it's due to go offline in October 2008. This will displace 62% or more of the nearly 450 residents at Hayward into becoming homeless, including myself. We're now witnessing parades of people wandering around vacant foreclosed houses in gentrified neighborhoods where homeless never entered. We once had an infrastructure that took care of their own, and being homeless was never an issue. The cause of this symptom imperative has never been addressed. We see it in our jails where the gangster culture is virally infected, incarceration complete to the guards, their higher-ups, their unions, into defending what? It's never seen in discussions about the homeless, yet police sweep prove fruitless, and the homeless go somewhere else, sometimes to somewhere new, and we wonder why. It's a symptom imperative in action. Whose symptom imperative will be dominant next? Will our ability to purchase food be compromised? With all the monies that's been recently allotted to affordable housing, I'm asking you, the city of Los Angeles, to buy the Hayward Hotel. Otherwise, you'll have to answer to many of those residents who will be displaced permanently with nowhere to go, and neighborhoods invaded because of this symptom imperative. Los Angeles does not need any more rental refugees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Laven Bond, also downtown, the next five speakers are from downtown. Followed by Michelle McFarland, and then Debra Burton. Please, go ahead.
My name is Laverne Bond, I'm a resident of Hayward Manor Apartments. I was one of the residents that was illegally relocated from the 13th floor to the 9th floor. We're currently experiencing delays in returning to those former rooms because the LA Housing Authority did not want to pay the increased rent because of the renovations being done there. Time circumstances are preventing us from even possibly getting those rooms back because the contract will be over, and that will, the solution was to give us a Section 8 voucher, which only lasts for approximately 90 days. The problem with the housing situation in Los Angeles is that it would possibly take about one year to three years on a waiting list to get another set of low-income housing. What I'd like to see the City Council do today is, if it's within their power, is to possibly encourage or to create favorable conditions for the Housing Authority to possibly extend those vouchers by working with, again, with the L.A. Housing Authority, or creating favorable conditions for the L.A. Housing Authority to purchase the Hayward Manor Apartments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I would encourage you, Laverne, to go upstairs to Mr. Weezer's office, who there represents that area. We can't take action on that item today because it is in public comment, but encourage you to go up to his office as well. Thank you, next speaker? Ms. McDonald, McFarland, excuse me.
Good morning, council members. My name is Michelle McFarland. I am a representative of the Hayward Manor Tenants Council at 206 West Sixth Street, which is in Mr. Jose Weezer's district. I am also a longstanding anti-poverty advocate, and I am here to lodge a complaint. I have tried time and again to schedule a meeting with Mr. Weezer's office to discuss and share information on the issues surrounding the impending loss of housing at the Hayward for the longtime low-income tenants. However, every effort to contact his office has been rebuffed by his deputy staff, specifically his chief of staff, Carl Rove, I'm sorry, I mean Joe Avila. I have scheduled a meeting with the mayor's office in about a week, but Mr. Weezer's office shows a complete disinterest in the welfare of his poorest constituents. I am appalled by the shabby treatment and slap in the face by Mr. Weezer's office, which purports to be a constituency-based office, especially when our goal is to present information, gain information, and coordinate with policymakers to help prevent a looming crisis in housing downtown, which affords low-income residents a continued place in the life of downtown Los Angeles. My questions are, number one, is this Mr. Weezer's policy to ignore his poor constituents? Two, who can we contact who will listen to the concerns of District 14? Three, how can we schedule a meeting with a policymaker who will understand the importance of addressing the needs of all the people? Thank you.
You, Debra, Deborah Burton, followed by Steve Diaz.
My name is Deborah Burton, and I work with the Los Angeles Community Action Network. There appears to be a contradiction in the intent and the practice of the City Council homeless prevention policy. In the city of Los Angeles, we have 1,700,000 people, of which 275,000 live in extreme poverty. If the Section 8-based program is not saved at the Hayward Manor Apartments and the residents are forced to relocate, that will only add to the dreadful condition that the city is attempting to resolve. Los Angeles is spending $6 million on policing in the downtown Scare Row community, and to a lesser extent, $5 million on citywide shelters. For example, in downtown L.A., 50 additional police officers was added at a cost of $1.7 million, which could have been used to house 175 homeless peoples permanently, especially in a community that is the third largest crime, has the third largest crime rate in the city of Los Angeles. The lowest, sorry. So please, I strongly urge you to take to heart the real human lives that you are affecting with your action, to create a public policy that will not disregard the needs of our poorest community. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Diaz, followed by Joseph Thomas.
Yes, my name is Steve Diaz, and I'm here today representing the Los Angeles Community Action Network as well. We're here today to say that we oppose the downtown housing incentives that are going to be before the City Council on August 7th, because we cannot continue to incentivize market rate development at a time in which Los Angeles is facing an all-time affordable housing crisis. In downtown alone, in the last past five years, we have lost 1,200 residential hotel units that have housed extremely low-income individuals. At the Hayward Hotel, we're about to lose 425 extremely low-income housing units if the City Council does not take action, especially Mr. Councilmember Weezer. At this time, I'm here to say, we need to pass public policy that creates community and that does not displace community, save the Hayward, and create and stop the downtown housing incentives as is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thomas.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Thomas. I represent the Los Angeles Community Action Network. On and about February 2008, the owners of the building began constructing work on top floors without permits. As a result of the tenants living there were moved to lower floors against their will and without proper notices, the owners promised to return the tenants to the original rooms as soon as possible. During that time, none of the work on the floors has been fully completed, leaving the tenants in limbo. We feel the owners are deliberately stalling in the completion of the work, causing confusion, conflict, and turmoil in our lives. Now, it has come to our attention that the project-based Section 8 program, which most of the tenants rely upon, is coming to an end as of October 2008. When that occurs, there will be about 425 new homeless on the streets of downtown Los Angeles. This is our greatest concern, and this is why we are here today. However, the Housing Authority of Los Angeles has expressed interest in the possible purchase of the building. We appeal to the council member, Jose Weezer, and the City Council, as well as the mayor's office, to support the Housing Authority of Los Angeles in this endeavor. It would ensure that the Section 8 program remains intact for our lowest-income citizens, including women and children who are now in the greatest need of continuation of this program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes our public comment period in downtown. We do have here Darlene and Dave Madison. Darlene and Dave Madison. Darlene and Dave Madison. Reverend Glenn Rowland. Sharon, followed by Candido, followed by Dan.
She's coming.
No, no, I said following Sharon. I wouldn't forget Sharon.
Of course not. Sharon Brewer. Lake Balboa safety issues. Something has to be done about the parking, the illegal parking at Lake Balboa that's allowed... has been allowed to happen. I have a picture here that shows cars that are parked illegally. They're supposed to be parked, parallel parked, and they're facing into the lake and a safety issue. There's also a sign there that says, "Parallel Park on Pavement." This is also another one where this car is parked between poles that... There's a fire hydrant there, but they feel that they can take and just park there anyway. This past weekend was the first weekend that we've actually had no cars parking on the bike path. That was accomplished because an officer, public safety person, had to respond to a call from the lifeguards, and I asked him whether or not tape could be put up where the cars park on the bike path. He had tape and he put the tape up, and Saturday and Sunday, no cars were parked there. The reason they probably weren't parked there was because the tape said it was Los Angeles Police Department, "Do not cross." Recreation Parks took the tape down on Monday. There still are missing white poles at the park, and I'm hoping that CD6 could take and have tape put up on the weekend again until Recom Parks does something about the problems with those missing poles so that cars will not park on the bike path and will not cause a safety issue for the people that are supposed to be using the bike path and not the cars parking on there. So please, CD6, will you please make sure that somebody puts up tape again at the lake for the weekend and that it is not removed? Thank you.
Thank you. Candido, followed by Dan, and then followed by Sheldon Walter.
Good morning, Madam President, council members, and again, thank you for being here in the Valley. I am the chairperson for the Van Nuys Community Court, which was founded in 2001, which is set up to improve the quality of life in Van Nuys. And as it was mentioned earlier, there is a building, the old library building, that is for sale. That should not be for sale. That is a building that should be given to the community court program. It is the... The community court in Van Nuys is one of the original three in the nation. There are over 35 in the nation. We have struggled to survive, but with the funding that you folks have provided for us, we've been able to maintain our pace and we're looking forward to actually growing. The San Francisco Mayor's Office has contacted us, asking about our court program, and I know Wendy Gruel is a great supporter of our community court. But this group here from the New Valley Sympathy, this is a building that could be utilized at night by that group and we could use it for other functions where we can keep the history of Van Nuys. Some people... Madam President, members, some people say that we're Don Quixote's, that we're dreamers. We're not. We have a quest, and the quest is to take Van Nuys Boulevard back, to return Van Nuys Boulevard to a community that it used to be, and we're not going to stop until we do that. So thank you, Madam President. Thank you for being here in the Valley.
Thank you. Dan? Is Dan here?
Good morning, City Council. We still have a major veterinary crisis in the city animal shelters. We have a fraction of the vets we're paying for. You've known about this since January 8th, when the LA Times wrote about it, and since Ed Bokes is here today, when he comes up to talk to you, ask him a side question about how many staff veterinarians we have in the city right now. It's eight months later. Where are the vets? Ask him where they are while he's here. I have another concern that Mr. Bokes is failing to get the permission and approval of the commissioners that are assigned to LA Animal Services. There's no point in having commissioners if Mr. Bokes just refuses to listen to them. A perfect example you'll be talking about later today is Item 41. I'm not talking about Item 41 now, but when you get to Item 41, ask Mr. Bokes if he ran it by the commissioners. He did not. This is an outstanding program. It's an outstanding program by a world-class rescuer named Tia Torres and a great organization called Villa Lobos Animal Rescue. You should support it wholeheartedly, but ask Mr. Bokes why he did not run the program by the commissioners. This is a superb idea, a private sector idea from Villa Lobos Animal Rescue that you should support, but ask him why he did not get the approval of the commissioners. It's a sham to have commissioners if you don't use them, and he must and he didn't, and it's... You know, this is a great idea that's going to be handcuffed until the commissioners sign off on it. Please support the idea, but ask Mr. Bokes why he did not consult the commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheldon Walter, and then followed by Dan Weissman.
Good morning, Madam Chair, council people. We're certainly welcoming you back in the Valley and hope you hadn't had any transportation difficulties getting here because transportation has received an F in Los Angeles, unfortunately. As you know, probably, the MTA has conducted hearings to extend the busway along Canoga Avenue up into Chatsworth, and they come up with nine different alternatives. Now, I won't go through all the alternatives, you've probably seen them, but alternative five has to do with the orange line itself going along Canoga Avenue. I would suggest we avoid that alternative as dozens of businesses would be displaced with a busway, also with proximity to Canoga Avenue and that grade crossings with heavily traveled east-west arteries. Van Owen, Sherman Way, Saticoy, Roscoe, Parthenio, Nordell would be difficult intersections for both existing traffic and buses on the busway to navigate without accident prospect. Present orange line buses are restricted to up to 10 miles an hour to cross intersections to reduce collisions with cross-traffic. Busways like the orange line could be excellent transportation for, say, the Pacific Coastline, where buses would encounter few intersections and little traffic and crossings. Busways as mass transit rarely exceed 50 miles an hour, and surprisingly, the orange line 14-mile system has about 25,000 patrons per workday. Popular. Rapid rail transit like Red Line and MetroLink is rapid mass transit from 50 to 80 miles an hour and totally exclusive right away with great separations or grades of crossings. If we elevate the transit, like going like in the green line, the blue line, in places or in New York City, Chicago, Miami, and other cities, of course, this costs more to construct, but would become a higher-quality, superior transit system.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Okay, if you want to give it to the guard, we'll make sure we'll get it. Thank you, Sheldon. Nice to see you. Dan Weissman? Dan Weissman?
You asked for Dan a moment ago. It got me all excited. Anyway, again, our welcome from the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council to our fair community. We're always glad to see you here the first Friday. One thing I'm noticing here, and there's no way to go over the issues that are on my mind, there's no way to go over the issues that are on your mind in two minutes. The first issue is that I'm delighted to see that the majority of you are paying attention to the people who are coming to this lectern and bringing their concerns to you. There are some exceptions to the rule, who I won't point to again, but this is going to change, I hope, soon. Mr. Allercon, we are delighted to let you know that the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council and many of the neighborhood councils are concerned with the medical marijuana issue, with the property and land use issues, and many other issues, and we hope to bring those to your committee in subsequent meetings, and thank you for your help. All of you members have been really very helpful to each and every one of us, and there's just... I'd love to talk about things. I will be talking at some of the other speeches, some of the other items that are coming up, but the most important thing is that we now see a substantial amount of community participation, even some responses from you. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for your response to the issue before. But as you know very well, the image, the appearance of impropriety in politics is impropriety. I think other people could have performed the function that that LAPD officer did, even though he is a DAA. But, you know, these kind of things are the fractional items. The important items is we're working together. We're working together for better communities locally and citywide. We thank you for it. We look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, that closes public comment period for today. First item.
First item is Item 32, and that is called "Special by Cards from the Public."
Yes, Zuma Dogg, followed by Sharon Brewer and Miriam Fogler. Item number 32.
Yes, this is special event. Special event fees. I've spoken about this quite a bit, and I'm glad to say that there has been a lot of improvement over the past year regarding special event fee waiver abuse. A lot of the events that I've been complaining about, commercial events that the city's been picking up the tab for, now we are seeing them say, "Event sponsors shall reimburse the city for all fees and costs." So thank you for that again, City Council, for listening to the people on this side and for doing something about it. There's still concerns, though, over nonprofit organizations because, A, we have to make sure that these items are actually reimbursed as they say. I understand that that might be a tough thing to prove in some occasions. And also regarding nonprofits, I think we need... I believe Councilmember Parks requested a motion for an audit of all nonprofits. Before the city gives any money, I'd like to see Laura Chick possibly do an investigation because there's a lot of front-end loading. It's called front-end load management. In these contracts, when these nonprofits are operating, the city will give them money. There's a concern about a privatization of things like for LAUSD and for health and parks, and we have to be careful when we deal with these nonprofits that there's not too much money going to the management, the cronies for frills and expenses and people's relatives that sit on these boards, that too much of the money goes to the management and not enough goes into the actual service or park or school or event. So that's what we need to look for for these. That's why we can't get projects finished in this city, like Belmont 400 million or all of these different projects that don't get completed because too much of the money earmarked. This is public money, public trust. There is a problem of too much public decisions being made without the public input and the money being abused. So I think I'll wrap that up for right now. That's something to look forward to over the next year, taking it to the next level because I am here under the management of Dr. W. Edwards Deming to help improve the quality and productivity through increased efficiency and less waste, and that's something we could all agree on, no matter which side of the rope you're on. Zuma Dogg, thank you for being here. Zumatimes.com.
Thank you. Sharon Brewer, followed by Miriam Fogler.
Item number 32, special event fee waivers. Today, we have 20 total items. Three are reimbursed, 17 have amounts, to the total of $111,526. One of the items, Jay, is for $34,678 for an LA Stars charitable event. This event is a USC... They're sponsoring host for more than 50 NBA players and celebrities. They expect 10,000 participants. The fee waiver is for traffic control devices and temporary stopping signs. There's also a celebrity basketball game. My question is, if you're able to get 50 NBA players and celebrities to come to a function, why do you need the city to pick up the tab? Why can't the NBA players or the celebrities go and take care of the fee waiver? Also, for two days' worth of fee waivers, you have now $146,221, not counting the ones that say that they will reimburse the city, which sometimes end up coming back under radar and the city ends up going and having to pay for them. Again, why does USC need somebody to pick up the tab for a charitable event with NBA players and celebrities? Thank you.
Thank you. Miriam Fogler.
And why are we going to the taxpayers for bonds for housing? You want to put a $1 billion bond in. You've got these organizations that are getting these fees waived. You know, the USC, they should be footing the bill. This is adding up, folks, and we can't hire enough police officers because of all the extra expenditures that we're putting on our... I'm watching my house, why can't you watch your budget? After I'm coming down here and sacrificing myself, my... You know, I have medical problems and I don't need to be bought by a security officer for water and food. To tell you that, I care about my city. I love you all, okay? I love everybody, and I want to see these fees to be collected, not to be... The city has to foot the bill for them. They got plenty of money, and they can raise the money for this. And it just goes on and on and on. Why should we be giving LA property away? You know, the city that owns public property away to churches and to private entrepreneurs under CRA. Why are we doing that? It costs so much money for us. These people are... This is not right, what you're doing, to giving away our stuff, our money, our property to these different organizations. They can pay for this stuff themselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next is item number 33, and that was called "Special" for amending motion, which has been distributed.
Okay, and item 33, unless there's any comments on item 33, Madam Clerk... You are on 35, Mr. Zuma Dogg. 33, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next is item 35, and that was called "Special" by Cards from the Public.
Yes. Mr. Zuma Dogg.
Yes, thank you, Zuma Dogg. Some of you might not recognize me. I came today without my normal garb to try to do something outside my comfort zone to show that I'm willing to try to stretch and change, and hopefully, everybody out there will do the same, including council. This is about the Save Me a Spot in College Scholarship, and that's hosted by the mayor. Thank you, Antonio. This is a reception for transfer funds paid for services for the Save Me a Spot in College Scholarship, and that relates into LAUSD, and it's important because LAUSD, they want to start to prepare kids better for college, and everybody might say, "Well, gee, that's an admirable goal." I'm saying, you know, the goal of LAUSD should not be to prepare all kids for college. It should be to prepare all kids for jobs to be able to create a living for themselves, and those are a lot of vocations these days. All the high-end jobs of college, a lot of them have gone overseas into Asia, China, all over the place, except for here, including manufacturing. So I think if we start to try to prepare kids for college, it might be raising the bar too high with the 50% level of dropout rate, so I think we should be more preparing kids for vocations to provide jobs. There's nothing wrong... We don't have enough... You guys love to build high-density condos all over the place. DWP can't find the electricians they need. That's a very high-paying job. What used to constitute a high-paying job required certain things like college. Now it can be vocation. There's nothing wrong with contractors when you need your refrigerator fixed, the plumber or whatever. You can't import those from Asia, and we need to focus on the jobs in society that we cannot export... that cannot be exported. So that's what I'd be looking for during this college expo, and please, parents, help come to this college scholarship with your kids because the other thing, LAUSD, they have a very uphill battle trying to simply get kids to behave and to be interested. We need more parental involvement. That does not just mean when your kids get home, you say, "Hey, how was your day at school?" And they watch Xbox all day. So try to take a stake. Try to help LAUSD do a better job. Thank you. My name's Zuma Dogg.
Thank you. The only speaker card on that item 35. Madam Clerk, if you would open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Next item.
Next is item number 36, and that was called "Special" by Cards from the Public.
Mr. Zuma Dogg.
Well, just because I don't wear hat and glasses does not mean I still don't care about many issues, and I will still be talking out just as frequently, much to your dismay, but this is about the track maps, and oh my goodness, you've been hearing me come in here for the past year saying, "There's a lot of track maps coming through here. I've never seen this many track maps. How are we going to have all the infrastructure for all these track maps?" Well, now, as the people of Los Angeles look around the city, you see nothing but wood all over the place, construction, everything going up, and a lot of those projects have been in violation of things like vacancy rates and all types of tenant rules and things like that. So I just want you to see, look at what we're left with now. There's way too many track maps, and I want to make sure, I hope, from here on in, that all of these are in accordance with the new rules and regulations that have been enacted, new laws that have passed, and also with the vacancy rates that are already in law because we're having a real infrastructure problem. When you see condos going up everywhere, and now I was on... When you see condos going up everywhere, and now, I was on Sunset Strip on Friday, and we had some tourists that were in from New Orleans, not tourists, they now live here from New Orleans displaced. They're like, "Wow, it looks like construction everywhere going on in the city," and that's absolutely right, and we don't have the proper infrastructure. We need to widen the streets, start building, one more second, start building a little more infrastructure like police, fires, schools, and roads and plumbing, and a little less housing. Thank you.
Mr. Zuma Dogg, you've put in a card for item 40 and 42. You have one more opportunity to speak. Would you like to speak on item 40 or item 42?
Maybe I can combine it. That's a special, right?
On the special agenda, there's item 40 and item 42. You can let the guard know. We'll go ahead on this item. You can let us know which item you'd like to speak on.
Can I combine them? Can I do, combine them?
We have two minutes, so...
Combine them, right?
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, open the roll on item 36, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Next is item number 38, and that was called "Special" by amending motion that has been distributed.
It's been distributed. I know you outlined it earlier. Any comments you'd like to make, Mr. Parks?
No, I think it's self-explanatory. It just fulfills our commitment during the budget hearings.
Right. Thank you. Seeing no one on the speaker queue, Madam Clerk, if you would open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item, forthwith. Thank you. I think we're on item number 40.
Item number 40 was called "Special" by amending motions that have been submitted now.
As well, we did have two cards on this item, so the amending motions have been distributed. We have Zuma Dogg and Miriam Fogler.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, this is about community development block grants, CDBG, and it's a big, long thing. And I'd like to say, I've been contacted by many members of the community, especially on the east side, regarding a lot of fraud, waste, and abuse regarding community development block grant money, and I will be looking into that. And I'm anxious to see what Miriam has to say because this is involving central mixed use for $5 million here, requested the controller to transfer funds. So, Miriam, is that something you're well-versed on? I'd like to yield the rest of my time to her. This is something, I'll be following her, but basically, what I'll be saying, no yields, okay?
No yields.
Stand right by, Miriam, for emotional support anyway because she's such a community champion and activist. Maybe she can whisper in my ear. I'd just like to say regarding this grant money...
It's CRA money.
Oh, the CRA, it's CRA. That's what I thought. Talk about front.
They're taking the money, and they're taking the money, and you...
It's, okay, it's front, a lot of front end. Okay, the CRA is supposed to be for creating blight, but what they do is they make these projects, and they give a lot of public money that are going to things like Grand Avenue project, a lot of downtown developments that are public interest. And there's two, the CRA is, we're going to be tanked in this city. We're going out of business because of all the money that the CRA takes and spends on things that are not in the best interest of public. They're making decisions on their own. They've taken control of, you know, a lot of times, they just take control, they make the decisions. The city says, "Okay, we're making this decision. We're going to be doing these projects." Well, there's been no public input, and the money's not supposed to be for use for these things. It's supposed to be for blight. And also, City Council, I know that sometimes you work with the CRA and you make decisions as a state agency. You're not allowed to be making state decisions in CRA projects over parks and things that involve public land and trust at the local level. I know that you're making decisions sitting with the CRA on projects at the state level, and that is illegal, my friends. And now, I'd like to hear from Miriam and watch that CRA money because it's public money that is being, a lot of front-ended management contracts like I spoke about, and decisions of public trust that are being made by this company, and we do not get the money's worth, and they're rolling the dice. They're rolling the dice with our money, the CRA.
Thank you. Ms. Fogler.
As I'm saying here is that Ernie Bernardi was the spearhead. He was the only one on the horseshoe here for 30 years. Is anybody that would stand up to the plate right now like Rosendahl doesn't have one CRA project in this area. Anybody else would, Cadenese doesn't want one in our district. I mean, we've got people who are here don't want the CRA because they know that they take their property taxes away from their communities. The police, we have to hire, have to have trash fee to hire police. We are having trouble now with our infrastructure, sewers, sidewalks. You want to pass a bond on us for money for sidewalks? We need to see these grants, these block grants for the things that you want to pass taxes on us, and we can't afford this. This is going to affect our children and our grandchildren. We need to take back our city, take control, take it away from the developers. Please, become honest, be nice to the public, and we'll be nice to you. We'll help you. I'd be glad to even vote for your third or fourth term, whatever. I just want to be able to, I want to see you guys help us, okay? This is, we're going to be the greatest city in the whole country. Let's build our bridges good. Let's build everything nice here, okay? So, we don't have the same thing happen like what happened in Minneapolis. Yeah, and let's pray for those souls, and let's not let it happen here, okay? All right? Let's make it good here and efficient, and let's let the dollars go where it's supposed to go. I'm not going to CRA because CRA is a private company, and they should be only working with private development. And I'm for private development, but not overdevelopment, okay? We can't build so high like New York. New York is right now is in real bad shape. They had to pass a noise law. Can you imagine that? You can't play music or anything on the street because it's so crowded there. Let's not get that way here, please. Let's keep it smaller here.
Thank you very much. This item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
If we could take item 42, because Mr. Zuma Dogg had used up all his time, he was the only card there. Open the roll on item number 42, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item.
Next is item 41, and that was called "Special by Cards from the Public."
Thank you. For the public, I'd like to ask the following individuals who do a public comment. You'd like to make a comment, Mr. Rosendahl? Okay. I'll have to check because I know your button's not working today, so...
Yeah. Thank you, Madam President. Item 41, colleagues, just to give you a quick synopsis of it. It directs the Department of Animal Services to report to Council prior, which means today, on the pit bull training academy and the following: one, how the department became involved with the program, the cost to the city for the program, whether it is intended to be ongoing and any liability to the city; two, whether the council was involved in the decision to create this public-private enterprise; three, the decision-making process for using parolees to staff this enterprise over city employees or community volunteers; four, whether service employees in a national union or any other union employee was consulted regarding staffing this program. So, we're going to ask those questions when the department comes before us. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you very much. Now, at this time, this matter's being considered. Do we have anybody representing the department here?
Now, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, could we let the public comment happen first, and then we can develop that into the questions that we will ask him?
Flip a coin real quick.
Okay. That's what I like to do.
All right, here we go. Hold on, Mr. Bokes. Okay, we've got these cards that are here. I'm going to move a 10-minute public hearing.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Ask speakers to speak in 45 seconds or less.
Great.
So, everybody could speak. Okay? Marco Hernandez, please. Donovan Taylor.
My name is Marco Hernandez, and I'm a parolee. I've been going everywhere looking for a job. It's kind of hard, and it just gave us this opportunity, it's like a dream come true. I have two little boys, I mean, to support, you know? And this is a great opportunity for us.
Thank you very much, Marco. Mr. Taylor, Tyler.
My name, for the record, is Donovan Taylor, and my CDC number is V70286. This job is really important to me. This job will allow me to repay loans to my folks, will help me with school, which I'm still attending. You know, I made some mistakes in my life, and I'm trying to do the best that I can to make up for those mistakes. And Tia Torres over here is really stepping to the plate. She's helping out a great deal with two very important issues. One is this genocide and murder of these innocent dogs, many of whom are really good, loving animals that could easily be trained by someone who has experience. I've been training dogs my entire life. And, you know, and then, in terms of myself personally...
Thank you very much. If you could wrap it up real quick.
In terms of myself personally, what this means to me is that I can have an honest, hard-working job that I can be proud of, and that I don't have to depend on anybody's system, any kind of handouts, any kind of welfare. I don't have to live off my folks.
Thank you.
And I can work. Thank you very much.
Mr. Daniels, please. Jaron Daniels.
Hello, I'm Jaron Daniels, and I am a parolee. Well, this opportunity presented before me from Tia Torres is a dream come true for me and my family. You know, I have three kids, and without this opportunity right here, I don't know how I could support them. But I'm really appreciative of this accomplishment with the Pit Bull Academy program. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dan Weissman, followed by Mariah Kay, followed by Tia Maria Torres.
Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, I'm very pleased that you raised in favor of this. As you know, we've just recently reopened the Van Nuys Animal Shelter. It's two blocks from my home. It's three blocks from this building. It's an excellent animal shelter. I understand that there's a move afoot, and I would support it, to reopen and reestablish the animal shelter that was closed on Sherman Way and Ethel Street because the animal shelter near my home is already full.
That's right.
It's full 80% of pit bulls and other dogs of the same size and shape. Now, as an animal lover and an animal owner all my life, I've known all kinds of dogs. I love these animals. They're wonderful. This is a win-win-win situation going on here. You've got the ability to help these pit bulls who deserve it. You've got the ability to help people in the community who need opportunities to work. You've got the opportunity to make our homes and our neighborhoods safer for all of us. Please support this bill. I hope you'll pass and put this forward. Thank you so much.
Mariah, thank you. Mariah Kay.
The council needs more room, too.
Hi, my name's Mariah Kay, and I'm 15 years old. I'm Teen Miss Temecula, and as Teen Miss, we're supposed to learn to be role models and to learn to forgive people. And all the parolees, I've been around for years now. I've grown up with them. I've grown up with the pit bulls. I look up to all of them a lot, as much as they've all made mistakes. All of them take care of me, open doors for me. They're more polite than most guys, actually. And as far as the pit bulls, they are, as far as the pit bulls go, I've been around them my entire life, and I can proudly say that the only dog I've gotten bit by was actually a lab and never a pit bull. All these guys, I honestly feel that it's kind of sad that a 15-year-old has to say to a bunch of adults not to be judgmental towards them just because you can't say that none of you guys have made mistakes in your past. I know they got caught for their mistakes and no one else did, but I look up to all of them, and I hope that you guys can get past the fact that they're on parole and the fact that they're pit bulls. Thank you.
Thank you. Tia Maria Torres.
My name is Tia Maria Torres, and I am the one who created this chaos. I have been running this program off of my own property for the past six years and the parolee program. It was inspired because I went to a parole meeting, it was a job fair, actually, for parolees, and I was the only employer that showed up. Hundreds of employees, and I was the only employer. You know, I can honestly say that in all the years of doing this, I have had 100% success rate with my guys. Not one of them has gone back to prison. Not one. Not one, guys, okay? So, if you're talking dollars and cents, at $40,000 a year to house an inmate, I have probably saved the state about a quarter of a million dollars, okay? That's if you're talking in money. I'm talking about a deeper than that. It's like Donovan said, and Jaron said, and Marco said, these guys are trying to make an honest living. They're trying to do the right thing. You know, it's, if we don't step up to the plate, you know, everybody wants to say rehabilitation, rehabilitation, but no one wants to do the rehabilitation. The governor changed the name of CDC, which is the California Department of Corrections, to CDCR, California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation.
If I could ask you to conclude, please.
Where is the rehabilitation? Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Sanchez, followed by Robin Kratz.
Good morning, councilmembers. Teresa Sanchez, Service Employees Union. I'm a little bit at a disadvantage speaking before the department because I wasn't aware of this program until I saw it on the agenda today. But I would like to say that as a representative of animal care officers and animal control technicians, and having spoken to all of you at one time or another about animal welfare issues and animal services issues, you know that this union is deeply involved in concern for animal issues, animal welfare, as well as workers' rights and the promotion of cities' animal services. I also speak to you today as a seven-year member of the city's Workforce Investment Board, and I can tell you that we have had constant, constant discussion about what we can do to improve our workforce development services to our reentry population. It's absolutely huge. It's critical that we work together to figure out how do we serve people coming out of prison, off parole and probation. We want to talk about innovative programs that we can work together on with city resources in the private sector, but to be made aware at this moment that city resources may be going into some sort of a private nonprofit effort that has not come before any of your committees, it has not come before, to my knowledge, Public Safety, Budget and Finance, Community Economic Development...
If I could ask you to conclude.
Or to the Animal Services Commission. So, I would only ask council to be aware that it is critical that we have open public discussion about this issue before moving forward with any type of a program of this nature. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Teresa. Robin Kratz, followed by Dan, and followed by Teri Austin.
Good morning, council. My name is Robin Keats. I'm here to support the program. I'm the executive editor of six Los Angeles community magazines of the Brentwood Media Group, and as such, it's really important for me to be aware of what makes a city safer, saner, and more humane. This program does all three, and it does it in spades. I'm very familiar with it. It's a brilliant program, wonderfully executed, and most importantly, it's a proven program. This is a gift to the city. It's a gift to the state if this gets larger, and it could be a gift to the country. It's one of the most innovative programs I have ever seen. I intend to support it fully. I cover many of you. I look forward to seeing your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, followed by Teri Austin, and followed by Phyllis Doherty.
Hi. These are exactly the kind of men that you need to make this program a success. These are exactly alpha men who've been through difficult situations to reach out to dogs that need a break. These men need a break also. Ms. Torres came up with a home run of an idea, and she is known throughout the humane community. This is a winner of a program. Please don't delay it one second, but in the same breath, ask Mr. Bokes to produce the vote that he ran by the Animal Services Commission. He's going to lie to you and tell you that he did get their approval. He did not get their approval. Have him show it to you in the minutes, but don't delay this program one second. Let it start tomorrow. These are good men. These are the people who can get it done, and it's Ms. Torres's idea, and Villa Lobos and Morezki. Bless your heart. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Austin and Phyllis Doherty, followed by Julie Butcher.
Terry Austin, I'm president of the Amanda Foundation. Every time I come in before the council, I always want to congratulate you on being the most forward-thinking of any city council in the country. We're the only city in the country that is providing free spay neuter for our low-income residents and the problem of trying to get the pit bulls out of the shelter and the reason for a wonderful program like this, which I'm in support of, is because we have so many animals in the shelter. Last year, our mobile program did over seven thousand spay neuters for the year. This year, at July, we're already at five thousand, so we're going to beat last year's number. The reason this program is important is because we do have so many pit bulls in our neighborhoods. I will tell you, on the spay neuter van, it is the number-one breed that we are spaying and neutering. So, our community wants these animals in the community and therefore they're ending up in the shelters. I think that your concern has not been the validity of using parolees or the goodness of the program, but the media has promoted this program as rehabilitating aggressive dogs. I will tell you, I've known Ms. Torres for many, many years. Ten years ago, we did Lisa Gibbons Show that won a Genesis Award about pit bulls. That's how long we've been dealing with this problem. She's not going to choose aggressive dogs. She's going to choose dogs that are prime candidates for training. And I think that the media has portrayed this as a dangerous situation and I don't believe that that is the case. She is a proven commodity. Tia is the go-to person. There's not a better authority in our county or in the state that I know of. Many law enforcement organizations have asked her to come and speak and teach at their meetings and seminars.
And I would just ask you to conclude, Terry.
You couldn't have a better person, so she is not going to set herself up to fail. She knows what she's doing. She's going to show you that once again, you're being the forward thinkers in the country and I'm in full support of the program. Thank you.
Phyllis Doherty, followed by Julie Butcher, followed by Alfred Garland.
Phyllis Doherty, and I'm formerly with Pit Bull Rescue. Before Tia started, I helped Tia when she first started. I want to talk realistically about the dog because we have lost the point of this entire thing, which is the liability to the city of rehabilitating a dog that is innately aggressive and we cannot deny that. If we are going to stop the exploitation, the abuse of these animals, we have to be honest and say that a pit bull that is bred for aggression, bred for fighting, you cannot change who the dog is by any amount of training, nor can you make a pit bull aggressive if it is a sweet dog. And there are many sweet ones and concentrating on helping them is what we do need to do in our shelters and getting them good homes. I'm going to read you just some statistics briefly because we cannot ignore this. This is Animal People. It's an international organization that follows the statistics in the media. He's very accurate. From nineteen eighty-two to two thousand seven, July thirty-first, the number of attacks by pit bulls and their mixes, six hundred and seventy. The number of deaths, a hundred and nineteen, followed by rottweilers with only two hundred and fifty attacks and sixty-six deaths. German shepherds, that used to be the big biters, had only sixty-three attacks with sixteen deaths.
If I could ask you to conclude, Phyllis.
So, we have to acknowledge that the dogs that are being bred by the gang members for fighting are extremely dangerous. They cannot be rehabilitated. Let's approach this issue with good programs that work with the good pit bulls, but also with a program that addresses the breeding of dogs for fighting. That's where we can stop the source of...
Thank you, Phyllis. Julie Butcher, followed by Alfred Garland.
Good morning, council members. I rise on this lovely San Fernando Valley morning to raise some questions on behalf of the workers. First, the union questions whether there's been adequate, excuse me, whether there's been adequate analysis and public vetting of the serious public policy questions before you. Second, we question whether the council actually ever saw this, reached an affirmative, reasoned, informed decision. Is there an agreement with whom? Is this a loan, a lease? Are we giving away the old L.A. Animal Shelter? Beyond the obvious labor concerns about the presumptive use of parolees to staff this academy, the union has also practical questions. Who's going to clean the bathrooms? There was an abject lack of proper lawful notification to the union. Notice which would have afforded the workers and the department the opportunity to sit face-to-face with management and raise the concerns, ask the questions before agreements were reached and openings were announced. Is being the first U.S. city to have a pit bull really a good idea? Maybe every other large American city has sought fit to use its limited resources elsewise. Thank you.
Thank you. Alfred Garland.
My name is Alfred Garland and I have been awarded a court since I was ten years old. I'll be fifty next month. I've been on parole the majority of my life. I just discharged parole three months ago through working through the Villa Lobos Rescue Center. And I think that it's a program that'll work for people that's coming from prison, that's ready to do the right thing. And I've been through everything from placements to fire camps to Pelican Bay, everything that they got to offer as far as rehabilitation, and nothing has done it. I got discharge card and everything. I got a house and I'm married and everything has worked in my favor going through this program here. And I think it's needed to help others that's coming through the same process.
Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it. Close this public comment. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Rosendahl, did you want to say anything else before I...
I wanted to say, first of all, I want to thank you for letting this dynamic take place. I know Mr. Wesson was intently listening as he does the dog thing every month, which is terrific. We need to have a good discussion here. Some of the questions that you heard the public ask, I know technically we're not supposed to respond. I want you to respond because they're some of the same questions we would be asking and I will look forward to making my own questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Parks, do you want to speak before we have Mr. Parks?
If I may, I have a prepared statement that I think will address most of the questions and then I'll be happy to take any questions that the council has. Animal Services is planning to initiate the Pit Bull Training Academy and I very much thank you for this opportunity to explain the program, which is an innovative anti-recidivism program for people and animals. Our aim is to reach out to the underdogs of both the human and canine communities, helping both achieve better lives in the process. The program will be housed at the South L.A. Animal Care Center Annex and will employ ex-offenders as part-time exempt city employees to work with pit bull and pit bull-mixed dogs that are impounded by L.A. Animal Services' six, soon-to-be-seven, animal care centers. This will be done with the help of the successful Villa Lobos Rescue Center program, which is providing substantial support to this pilot program, including their own liability insurance policies. The Pit Bull Academy is a strategic program developed after being urged by the mayor last fall to think outside of the box and create collaborations and programs that can help the city achieve multiple goals. This program aims to address the crying need to prevent crime and rehabilitate ex-offenders while helping us achieve our no-kill goal with regard to animals and our care. Not to rehabilitate dangerous dogs or aggressive dogs, but dogs that are just in need of additional training to prepare them for adoption. Consider for a moment that pit bull and pit bull mixes represent twenty-five percent of all the dogs taken in by L.A. Animal Services. They represent nineteen percent of all the dogs adopted and yet they represent forty-one percent of all the dogs euthanized. It is abundantly clear that we cannot pretend to aspire to no-kill if we don't try harder to reduce that killed pit bull rate. Our department is not ready to write off an entire category of dog. Neither is the city's vocal humane community and neither should City Hall. The Pit Bull Academy program will hire as relief animal regulation workers six people from the at-risk community. They are people who are on parole or have been on parole and they will be subject to all existing and have been subject to all existing city of Los Angeles hiring procedures. They will enter a six-month rotation, during which time they will learn animal handling skills with dogs that require special training to be suitable for adoption. Importantly, the program is designed to mitigate public safety risks. Only the true ambassadors of the breed will be selected for the training and adoption program. We recognize better than most that some dogs cannot and will not be rehabilitated and the academy will better enable us to safely match dogs that might otherwise be killed with guardians capable of caring for these animals safely and responsibly. The goals of the program are simply to give parolees job skills and professional discipline for viable employment and to give more animals opportunities to become part of loving families. Parolees who have had animal cruelty-related convictions or issues at any time will not be hired. The Department of Animal Services will also hire two experienced animal handlers, trainers, as relief animal care workers to help our existing staff supervise the six parolees in training and to ensure safe and appropriate daily operation of the annex. Consistent with their part-time status, employees in this program may work only one thousand hours per calendar year. Because this program focuses on animals already within our system and because it will be implemented at the least public of all of our facilities, public exposure will be strictly limited and supervised. Participants in this program will have no access to public records. The Pit Bull Academy is modeled after the Villa Lobos Rescue Center's Pets in the Hood, a multi-service program that also targets the underdogs of the canine and the human communities. Pets in the Hood has a history of collaborating with L.A. Animal Services by taking a number of dogs from our shelters over the years, many of which can be seen in movies, television shows, commercials, and music videos. Tia Marie Torres's experience as a dog trainer and as a gang counselor for the city of Los Angeles led her to create Twenty-Five to Life, the inmate services program at the Villa Lobos Rescue Center, which provides a second chance to both dogs and people. Parolees are taught typical ranch-hand duties such as construction work, plumbing, electrical, and auto mechanics, in addition to animal care and handling. The program's resources are not limited to the animal industry. The organization's strong relationships within the broader community allows for the needs of each individual parolee to be attended to, whether it be the life skills such as learning how to set up a bank account, learning how to apply for a driver's license, or enrolling in continuing education classes. The Pit Bull Academy at the South L.A. Animal Care Center Annex will benefit from the experience and expert guidance from the Twenty-Five to Life program facilitators and instructors. These are skills which the department's own staff simply does not possess at the levels and in the numbers sufficient to carry out the desirable program like the academy. The academy's curriculum includes classroom training in the fundamentals of dog behavior, learning how to skillfully handle and assess dogs based on their breed and heritage, identify the different types of dog aggression, understanding animal cruelty and the truth about illegal dog fighting, and the value of rehabilitation versus punishment. Hands-on training will focus on body language, kennel ethics, leash work, behavior observation and analysis, obedience training, customer service training, adoption procedures, and marketing. Upon completion of the program, parolees will have acquired skills to make them viable candidates for a wide variety of animal caretaker positions such as dog handler for film and television, professional dog walker, boarding kennel employee, doggy daycare employee, pet trainer for both private clients and at corporate locations such as Petco and as veterinary assistants. According to the U.S. Department of Labor, Bureau of Labor statistics, employment of animal care workers is expected to grow eighteen to twenty-six percent for all occupations through 2014. The companion animal population, which drives employment of animal caretakers in kennels, grooming shops, animal shelters, and veterinary clinics and hospitals, is expected to only increase. Employment growth of personal and group animal trainers will continue to grow from an increased number of animal guardians seeking training services for their pets, including behavior modification training. Program evaluations will be conducted following each six-month rotation and follow-up evaluation of the program's participants will document milestones achieved, including further employment for the program's participants, anti-recidism rate, and the number of animals adopted. The pilot program is not projected to have additional expenses outside of salaries since the animals involved would receive care and feeding from the department whether they were included in this kind of program or not. There are also opportunities for minor additional revenue due to adopting out trained dogs rather than euthanizing them and the possibility that the program will attract private sector donations. In fact, a donation of ten thousand dollars to help support the program was made just yesterday. While there is a modest cost, additional staff cost, this cost is offset by the significant relief of the workload currently assigned to staff who can then help with the heavy workload at the main South L.A. center, which is routinely short-staffed. We are planning for this six-month, for the first six-month term to start this weekend. The Pit Bull Academy is also being considered as the subject for an upcoming reality television show. Should this come to pass, it will result in increased exposure for the city of Los Angeles' gang and crime reduction initiatives and the Department of Animal Services. I believe it will also ultimately lead to increased animal adoptions. I firmly believe the Pit Bull Academy is an appropriate augmentation to the broadly-based efforts the mayor and city council already have undertaken to attack crime and gang problems in the city, and I hope you agree. I look forward to reporting back to you, the mayor and the board of Animal Services commissioners, on the progress of this pilot program in the coming months. I also welcome the involvement of the city council as you see fit and I am now prepared to answer any questions you may have about the program.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me just go through a couple of things. You've covered a number of issues I think most of us could be supportive of. The dilemma that I have is just finding out about this today and the fact that it's in my district, which we've not had a phone call to say this is what we're planning to do. We have information or there's debate whether it's gone through the process of the department and the commission. I know it hasn't gotten to public safety because I sit on that and it hasn't come through budget and finance and there's a lot of loose ends from my perspective as to whether on a presentation that you're making, whether we can be supportive of dogs being untrained. I don't know if all of us have that kind of background to understand that. And then what is the liability if we buy into this that then the dog goes out and bites somebody later? Where are we on that issue? I just don't believe that it's been, from my perspective, vetted out enough to where community input, community outreach, the council office, and all those things have been done enough for us to be having a news conference on Saturday saying we're kicking off a program. That's a major dilemma because most people misinterpreted the whole name of it as being academy as though we were training pit bulls to be pit bulls. And I don't think anybody disagrees that we don't, we certainly want to lower the euthanasia rate. We certainly want less dogs in the animal shelters. We want to help in many people as we can that have gone through the criminal justice system to get jobs. All those pieces, I don't think anybody disagrees with. It's just, I don't believe it's been vetted to the point that at least I have a comfort level to say that we should be having a news conference to kick it off without more information, more study, more things to where there's a comfort level. And I just don't know how we got to this point without some review above the general manager's level. Maybe you could explain that to me.
Absolutely. First of all, I want to thank you for the recognition of what we're really trying to do is reestablish the true nature of the pit bull, which was at the turn of the century, the last century, they were known as nanny dogs. They were used, they were more than any other breed. This is a...
You mean the century before. Where are the new centuries?
That's what I said. You're right. The one before. Right. Were known as nanny dogs. They were used to protect children and it was only in the latter part of the last century that they became so infamous. But more than any other breed, they've been recognized. The only, the first dog to ever receive a Congressional Medal of Honor was a pit bull. Petey that we all grew up with was a pit bull. So, by and large, these are animals and we are adopting out more pit bulls from Los Angeles Animal Services already than we are any other dog breed. So, when you ask what is the liability, this program is designed to mitigate the existing liability by assuring ourselves that we're evaluating and making sure that we're preparing the very best of the dogs for adoption and then placing them in appropriate homes. With respect to how we got to where we are, working very closely with staff and other departments, we went by the numbers. This program has, was, we did brief the Animal Services Commission three times, going back through the minutes, at least three times and possibly four. The commission, only one commissioner had asked some questions about the program via email, but in explaining to the commission that the only way we're going to achieve no-kill in the city of Los Angeles is to address or develop programs to deal with cats and deal with pit bulls because those are the two categories of animals that are dying in our shelters. So, that's why at the urging of the mayor to develop out-of-the-box programs, we approached Villa Lobos, which is a longstanding partner of the department and of the city, and to see if we could expand that program to be more meaningful. And another...
And another value of the program, of the eight employees, two are union-represented, six are not, but it is a six-month program, and at the end of the six months, we'll be able to evaluate these individuals to see if they should be encouraged to apply for the department. So Animal Services is a department that has a very difficult time filling all of our FTE positions, our full-time positions, so this is a grooming program as for potential employees at the same time.
Yeah, I support the idea that the mayor says work outside the box. I don't believe the mayor meant outside of the city process, and although you say you've had some briefings of your commission, from my understanding is that they've never taken a official position or moved it forward to public safety, and whatever the financial impact, we've not had it come through budget and finance. And when you say you went by the numbers, there's one major number you missed, and that was the eighth district where you're going to house it. And so those are major concerns of mine in addition to what the union brought up as to what their concerns are. And so before I said I'd like to make a motion that we not start this this weekend, but that we cause this to go back to the department and bring it through the process. If it's vetted as well as you say, it should move very quickly, but to get it through the department, through the Public Safety Committee, if there's budgetary impact, that it comes to budget and finance, and we deal with this so that we, I feel certain that the community that you're attempting to help is going to be supportive of it also. So that's my motion.
Do you have a second on that motion?
Yeah, right here, right here.
Second, Mr. Bonge. We'll look at which committee it would be referred to. It would be... Okay. Personnel and then budget and finance, I think, Mr. ... Okay. That is the recommendation. We have Cardenas, Alacon, Labonge, and Weston. Do you still wish to speak on this item today or wait until it comes back? Yep. Okay, well, you're not next, sorry. If Cardenas or Alacon want to speak on this now still? Okay.
Mr. Boakes, you, the council is now in a dilemma. We're having to weigh the differences, weigh the difference between a program that is taking parolees and keeping them from going back to prison. It is successful. Taking our most vilified dogs, which are pit bulls, which I do not agree in any way that pit bulls are more dangerous than other dogs. It's human beings that screw up the dogs. The dogs are not screwed up. The dogs are just fine. But here we have animals that have been vilified, we have a program that seems to have been proven over time. Here we are, the city, trying to combine various efforts that we've made, commitments to the people of Los Angeles, which is to reduce the euthanization of animals in this city, to actually help with re-entry onto our streets of parolees and people who have done time. We heard from a man who has spent forty of his fifty years of his life in prison and/or on parole. A program that can actually respect this man and actually give him some dignity in society, I think, is a great program. But as Councilman Parks just pointed out, we haven't been proven that this has been vetted properly through the process. For a lot of reasons, it has to be done that way, for reasons of liability, identifying what is or isn't our liability on these matters, to make sure that we're being careful about this. And then secondly, when something goes through the council, the council is supposed to vet it. This is the first time the council is vetting this. It sounds like a great program, but the reason why we have a process in this city is because we do have responsibilities to our workers and respect their opinion. In addition to that, we do have responsibilities of the elected body in the city that they have to vet certain things before they're implemented. And third, my question to you is, where are you getting the budget for this, and is it within your purview to actually shift that within your department without having to come to the council?
Yes.
My time.
As a matter of fact, this is our part-time budget that has been approved as part of the budget, is typically used for special assignments, special programs such as this. So to answer your question, yes, the department has the authority to do this.
Okay. But unfortunately, here we are on the council floor, and usually we're able to take the statement you just made, and through the Budget Committee, we can either agree with that and then move forward, or disagree with it and say we need to take specific action of the council before you do that. And unfortunately, we're here on a Friday, you're hoping to open this, I guess, tomorrow or over the weekend, and unfortunately, not enough notification has, have been made to all the pertinent parties who do have a responsibility to know what's going on. So although I do support and agree with your statements about what we want to do about people who've been prone to violence, who have record or what have you, and getting them into a different place, this program seems to be doing that very effectively. Secondly, that we are taking animals that have been vilified and making, proving to ourselves and to the community that those are misnomers, and it's not right for people to think of these animals in that way, and they can be rehabilitated. And you're absolutely right. Pit bulls can be some of the most docile, the most beautiful animals that any family could have as a pet. But unfortunately, most people don't believe that because of the misnomers out there. So there's a lot of good going on. Unfortunately, we've arrived at this in the wrong way, without having the proper parties vet this out. So what I'd like to recommend to Councilmember Parks, because we are talking about people whose livelihoods are at stake and a lot of other issues, if we could try to move this forward before the council goes into recess and move it through the process, I hope we can get that commitment from the various chairmen or women who are going to be handling this. It was recommended by Councilmember Weiss that he would waive it from his Public Safety Committee, and perhaps it should go to Dennis Ein's committee. Dennis isn't here, but the chairman of the Budget Committee is here, of which that's one of the committees it's going to go to.
We will have a joint meeting with Dennis after he finishes his. If we can waive it, we will. We just need to validate the cost. We want to facilitate it, it's just that we don't know enough to facilitate it today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Alacon, followed by Mr. Labonge, Mr. Weston, and Mr. Rosenthal.
Councilmembers, I think I'm in a unique position because I actually worked with Tia McGregor some thirty-some years ago in an anti-gang effort in Sun Valley, and am very familiar with her passion for reducing gang violence, and have only just learned today about that she is the person that is managing this program. Very interesting situation for me, but frankly, it seems that I think we can all agree that we want to do something to reduce the fact that sixty percent of the dogs euthanized in our system are pit bulls, and at the same time, if we can untrain them, if you will, or train them to be what they were, that would be a good thing. I don't think anybody is sure it's that. The question is process, and the first question is whether or not the department has the authority to contract outside without consulting with the city council, and I've checked with the CLA, and we don't know yet. And if you could shed some light there, that would be helpful.
There is no contract involved. These are hired city employees.
In what sense?
Tia is a volunteer.
What kind of city employees would they be?
Part-time exempt.
Part-time exempt, okay. So they are not civil service employees?
Two of the eight are.
Okay, then they're not exempt.
Well, the six, I'm sorry, the six are.
Six are exempt.
The six are.
What are the two?
The two are supervisors who'll be helping to supervise the program.
So are those supervisors part of the civil service system?
Yes.
I mean, they are current employees?
No, they're employees that are being hired for this program, but they are union-eligible, those two.
Okay, so these are new positions that have been created, or they're...
They're part-time exempt positions.
No, I'm talking about the two that you said are not part-time exempt. You said they were civil service.
The two that are, the two are existing positions, that's correct.
Yeah, so they are, you've given other employees the opportunity to serve in this capacity?
Because of the unique status of the program, it requires special qualifications.
Such as?
The ability to manage and teach dog training.
Okay, so you're saying that our Department of Animal Regulations doesn't have anybody who has the ability to train pit bulls, untrain pit bulls?
Not to the degree that this program acquires, that is correct.
Not to the degree, so it's not a no? So you have, I mean, I've got to believe that some of your animal control officers have the qualifications to do this.
And the ones who do are doing what they're already, we're already short-staffed.
But there is a civil service process that you recognize.
Yes.
Were they allowed to compete?
No.
Is this an open or closed position? Open or promotional?
This was a, this was a special needs position. Part-time, special needs.
Is it open or promotional?
I would have to check.
Okay. A promotional being from within the ranks, open being from outside?
It was open.
It's open. And the Personnel Department approved these positions in terms of the classification?
They did, yes.
Okay, and they are classified as?
Animal Regulation workers.
And do we have anybody else in the system who are classified as animal regulation workers?
That is our entry-level position.
Okay, so was there a competitive process for this?
Yes.
So others were allowed to compete?
Working. Others working with the parole boards. We were working with parole boards because this is a program that works with parolees.
Look, you know, this is, this is not, this is not rocket science here. The fact is, you have put the council in an awkward position. We want to encourage programs like this to change not only the behavior of animals, but to change, most more importantly, human behavior. To reduce the recidivism rate is a great thing, but we don't want to do it in the face of a system that we manage, a civil service system. And I think that you have abused that privilege. Even if everything is by the book, even if everything is legal and you have the appropriate authority, you're doing it in our face, and I don't appreciate it.
Well, that certainly was not the intention, sir.
Well, let's figure it out. Let's go back and do it right. The right way is to, is to bring those involved in the civil service process to the table, all of them, not just selectively, but all of them to the table. How can we resolve this problem of parolees who are doing the right thing, at the same time, we have a union that is defending its, our system?
Mr. Alacon, you can conclude. We're over on our minutes there.
So the bottom line is, this needs to go to a committee for review. I don't know why it didn't in the first place, but there's a better way to do it, even if you did it legally.
And just for clarification, the union did express their concerns in a letter, and the department did respond.
I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Weston, followed by Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you.
Oh, it's not on the queue, I'm sorry, Mr. ...
Oh, well, Mr. Labonge, I defer to the ambassador.
Your name was there before Mr. Labonge somehow got taken off.
Mr. Weston first, as it may.
Okay. Thank you.
That's why Mr. Labonge is the ambassador to Los Angeles. He's such a diplomat. Let me ask a couple of questions and hold my time. Exactly where is this academy located? Hold my time.
It's at the Los Angeles Annex facility, which is just a block or so from the main South L.A. shelter.
So whose district is that in?
It's District Eight.
It's in District Eight. This is, this is, it's now, what, the address to the facility is where?
Well, it's called the Annex, I don't have the exact address.
So it's not the one that's on Eleventh Avenue?
That's correct, this is a separate.
Wait, it is, I would need to understand which one it is.
Yes.
Thirty-six and...
It was the facility that was being used as a shelter while the current South L.A. shelter was being built several years ago.
Is this on the same property that I had a discussion with you?
It is.
It relates to the West Angeles church, and they want to expand?
It is.
Then that's my district.
Okay.
No, I mean, I just want to, unless, I mean, if this is the facility that is north of exposition on or about Eleventh Avenue, then that's in City Council District Ten, and I just want to make sure. Is that where this is located?
Apparently so, yes.
Okay, now how much money? Well, please have somebody find out.
For sure.
Exactly. How much money is it going to take from the city's budget to do this for six months?
The only monies that will be required are the salaries, and for the two supervisory or relief animal care worker positions would be $34,000 for the two of them, $95,000 for the six parolee positions, for a total of $129,000.
Not for six months, for six months?
That's correct.
So for six months, that's how much it's going to, it costs a total of what again?
$129,000.
Now, in the event that the council votes on the amendment by Mr. Parks that would delay this, what happens to the parolees? I mean, you're going to, you were scheduled to have your kickoff tomorrow. What happens to, do they just not work until, what happened?
That is correct, though. The process will be put on hold.
So because of the way that this was handled, we have six individuals who are, and America's supposed to be about second chances, that are ready to start work tomorrow, and they will not be able to do that if this is delayed.
That's my understanding, yes.
And the whole program, this pilot program, is, because I heard you say six months and another six months, or how long is the pilot, the whole thing supposed to be?
It could be evaluated every six months, and the intention was to come back to City Council and report on the program every six months to give you a status of its success.
The only, you know, everybody who has got up today has expressed some legitimate concerns where it relates to the process, and everybody that has stood up today has indicated that they could support this in concept. And I believe that it could be worked out with the unions. All of us would want to create an opportunity where individuals could come into the system and then have an opportunity to become union workers. It's just the way that we've gone about this that's been a problem. Members, is there not some creative way, and I'm not pushing it, is there not some, members, I need you on this, because this could be one of my really stupid ideas, and if it is, I'm sure you will tell me. Is there not a way that we could move forward for six months alone, or four months, then quickly direct this to whatever the proper department is? Have that department properly vetted, tweak it, adjust it, and then we bring it back here and make the changes. The only reason why I say let's think about that is because there are six individuals who are trying to have a second chance in a country that was built on second chances, and I would hate to see the delay adversely affect them. That's my only concern. I think this should have gone through the commission, it should have gone through the city process, we should have vetted it, but I'm just asking, and I don't even know if it's possible, is there a way to maybe reduce the amount of time to three months even so that it can start? If this is located in my district, I don't have a problem with, if it is. If it's in Mr. Parks' district, then I will, but if it's in my district, I would not have a problem in letting it go forward for three months as we send it to Department of Personnel or my committee or Jack's committee or whatever. That's what I'm asking. If not, I'll just defer to Mr. Parks, but we should think about that because there, we're going to put on hold the opportunity for some individuals to have a second chance at life and an opportunity to try to save the lives of some animals. I'm wondering if there's just not a way that we could fix that.
Mr. Labonge, then, followed by Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you very much. Mr. Boakes, you said the Personnel Department reviewed this?
My HR department has been working with the Personnel Department.
Your Personnel Department reviewed it, the Personnel Department said you could hire individuals tomorrow.
The individuals were already in the payroll system. They haven't started working.
Herb, 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 I think Mr. Parks is a thousand percent right. It should be vetted, your commission should look at it, but yes, this is a great country, and great ideas come together at the same time. Hire the six guys tomorrow, but don't do the pit bull thing. Don't do that. Just do things that are needed that you could do right now, okay? Because that's important. I'd hire six people right now, I've got things to do in my district to do things. Then you could... Then you could get the men working now, go through the process of whatever the academy, whatever academy is, and I think it should be a different word, but that's my thing. And then you have those men have that opportunity that you offered. Unfortunately, you have to go through a process here, Ed, and you can't work outside the process, because you fall down and then people get upset. It's not about whether the city workers don't want to, city workers work with all people. But if you want to put people to work tomorrow, and you say the Personnel Department said they could start tomorrow, then, okay, they, what else could you do in a shelter? What else could they learn to do in a shelter? What other process? I'm sure they have skills that could be learned in your process. That solves that problem. But then the other problem would be of going through what we actually are doing when we're talking about this. That is my suggestion. I support Mr. Parks, but if you want to start this now. Okay, Mr. Weston. So I got, I support, my motion to support Mr. Parks and add a friendly amendment, if the Personnel Department, and Maggie Whalen of the Personnel Department at 700 East Temple says it's okay for these men to go to work tomorrow, put them to work, you have other things they could do, don't you?
I do, but keep in mind, the vast majority of the animals in our shelters are pit bulls.
I understand that, but you have other things that you could do, right? Do you want me to try to get these men working tomorrow, or do you want me to say?
We'll find something.
You know, I mean, that's the thing, I'm asking you, Ed. And I think your commission, when does your commission look at this? Do they look at it, do they know about this?
Yeah, as I reported earlier, they've, we've discussed it at least three times.
On commission meeting, on agenda items.
It's in the minutes, yes. They didn't oppose the program.
Ms. Rosenthal, I'm sorry, Ms. Hahn pressed her button for the first time.
Thank you. I, I mean, certainly, and I think that needs to be said today, none of us are against second chances, none of us are against really working with people to give them good paying jobs. I think Councilmember Parks and I were talking about, you know, between Jan Perry and you and I, we have the majority of the parolees that come back into the system, come, are in our council district. So I work all the time trying to find jobs for folks who need a second chance and, and who have a record. That is not the point here. I think if you've already got them on the payroll, I agree with Councilmember Labange, let's, let's hire these guys, let, let's give them a job, give them something to do. But I think what we've lost too in this discussion is exactly what this Pit Bull Academy actually is intended to do. And part of what I think has not been vetted properly is the city's liability. For instance, if a pit bull gets a certificate at the end of the academy, has passed, you know, his lessons, and then, you know, something, and then someone adopts him, and some, and he then forgets what he learned and, and attacks someone or causes injury, how does that increase our liability that we've actually sort of certified this pit bull as being a good dog? And if he ends up being a bad dog, who's, who's going to be responsible? Those are just kind of things, and, and maybe you, I, maybe you can tell me the answer to that. But those are the kind of things, councilmembers, I would like to see the city attorney actually looking at the whole idea of a pit bull academy and what that means when a dog passes his lessons, and how are we held liable then, in fact, again, if, if he, if he does something bad? I have real concerns, and, and I know we, there's pros and cons about pit bulls. My staff member just had her puppy attacked in one of our city off-leash dog parks by a pit bull. She spent over $800 in, in vet bills to help her injured puppy. So, you know, I, I have issues with pit bulls out there, and I just wonder how this increases our liability, or if it is the way that we should be going, and if it does make more sense, and this is an opportunity for us to train owners and, and dogs. But these are the kind of questions that I don't feel have been answered yet. I really would like for your commission, and, and maybe that's a part of what we're doing today as well, I would like the commission to take a position on this. This is how we work in the city of Los Angeles, we have a commission form of government, we have citizens commissioners, they are the ones that are supposed to be running the department and are supposed to be taking a look at policy decisions. This is clearly a policy move, this is something out of the box, but I, I would like to see the commission be the one to look at that box that you're thinking outside of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal.
President, this is a very healthy discussion, and again, this is democracy at its best. We're on our feet, we're thinking out of the box, we're trying to be creative. I think everybody's comments have been really good at this point. I'd like Jerry Miller to come on up, please. The bottom line for all of us is process. It went below the radar screen, we put this motion up so we could have this healthy discussion about the issue. That's story one. Story two, I personally am a dog lover, Lulu, my, my shepherd Rosie passed away, and I think if a dog is treated right by its master, or trained right, or followed up with, it can turn into a positive animal. But I think Ms. Hahn's right about liability issues, it's, it's a real thing that we need to talk about. And as for the folks who would be doing it, I just think it's fantastic, I think it's all great. But Jerry, how did we get in this spot to begin with? Help me out a little bit, and where do we go with this?
How did we get into the spot? Well, Mr. Rosenthal.
How did this get below the radar screen, and we had to pull this out and do this and all that?
Again, I think as, as all of you have indicated, some of this is very unclear. Now, Mr. Box has the authority to, to hire personnel that have been authorized by the council and allocated by the Personnel Department. And it sounds as if that's largely what is happening here, is he has the position authorities and, and is hiring them, assuming that you have funded the programs that he's hiring them for. And, and I think that that's, you know, somewhat unclear than.
But this is a new program, we, we didn't know about it until this moment.
It appears to be a new program, but again, we, we have not, you know, looked into this in any great depth.
So what's your advice?
I, I think that, that, you know, certainly, as, as been indicated, Mr. Box has the authority to have these people start working tomorrow. I would suggest taking a look at this program and, and looking at the academy and the relationships there, looking at any liability issues that Ms. Hahn indicated, I think are very important, so that it, it's clear, you know, exactly what this academy is and what the relationships are.
Can this be done before we go on recess? Because frankly, I don't want to see any dogs put to sleep, you know, that might not have to be over a 90-day period, or, you know, if we could get this program going, if it made sense. Can we get it done next couple of weeks?
My staff will look at it, you know, as, as quickly as you would like, and then obviously it's going to depend on committee scheduling, depending upon how many committees want to see this. But we, we would be prepared to get as much information as we can as soon as the committees want to start meeting on it.
Okay, because, because I think Mr. Labange's thing, we put them on the payroll, it's a good idea, get going. I, I think Ms. Hahn's point about liability is a good one. I think Mr. Weston's creative thinking out of the box was a good idea to get the discussion going to the level it's at right now. So we're all in a good space here about wanting to see that dogs can come out of this mess, that obviously people can have jobs, and we know the best success for, for a person who's been through the criminal justice system is education and jobs, so that's a big plus. And so, if you can tell us how quickly we can move it through, or we can vet it properly, I would like to do two things. One, I'd like to go with Ms. Labange, put them on the payroll starting tomorrow, and I'd like to. And I'd like to expedite this process within our council, so that we can get the answers to all the other questions our colleagues. And one of our recess, before we go on recess, would be you coming before us and saying, we got it together, A, B, C, and get our unanimous support. Is that possible?
Well, what I might suggest is.
Personnel Committee, shouldn't that be one of the committees to go through, or Public Safety, or what?
You know, certainly Public Safety, Personnel, potentially, yes.
Which one would you suggest? People feel Personnel, I mean, does that make sense? Okay, so, is Personnel meeting between, between now and recess?
Yes.
August 15th, Personnel is meeting, okay.
What I, what I would suggest is continuing this in council until either that Wednesday or Friday, and in between times, you know, we will be working on the report and working with whatever committee you want to send it to.
And can we put them on the payroll?
Absolutely.
All right, so we can put them on the payroll now, we can go before Personnel Committee, if the council will agree on, on the 15th, and then you can bring it before the council a couple of days later, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, well, that's.
Mr. Rosenthal, the one thing I do want to make sure, I know you said yes, is that it'd be important that now that the, the individuals being hired is a little different than was originally proposed, that both Personnel and City Attorney, under the current labor agreements and so forth, that it's acceptable.
Right, of course.
I think that would be before any action is taken on that. May, as Mr. Labange said, as Maggie Whalen gives her blessing.
So if we can do all that, I move that that's the process we take, and then we come and revisit it as a council after the 15th, after the committee has done its work and makes its recommendation back to the council.
Mr. Alakon.
Members, I, I think it's clear, we all want, we would all love to test this idea and see if we could improve the temperament of these dogs, that's a great thing. And, and we also have demonstrated a history of supporting programs to put ex-offenders to work, and that's a great thing. But frankly, as a former senior Personnel Analyst for the city of Los Angeles, I'm troubled by this. The first thing we have to do is make sure that we act legally on the hires. The exempt position, from my recollection, I have no problem with. But I have, I have a problem that Mr. Box is telling me that the other two supervisors would be union eligible, when I don't believe they went through the city hiring process through the Personnel Department, and I don't believe they would be classified as non-exempt employees. I believe they are exempt employees, and Mr. Box testified that they were non-exempt employees essentially, and I believe that's incorrect. So, one of the concerns that, one of the concerns I have is that if we act too quickly, and Mr. Box is under the impression that he can hire these two people legally, it could get thrown back in our face if, if it is, and, and Mr. Parks is nodding, because he's been in the system long enough to know, and I think Ms. Gruel also understands, and Greg, you probably know a little bit about this too, that we could all have egg on our face and have to shut the program down very quickly if, if we haven't proceeded legally. So, so I, I don't know where we go from here, but it would seem to me that if we took a week to consider this, and I understand, you know, I want to get guys to work too. But if we wait a week to see what we can get back, what we can discover, I think we'll know a lot more in a week than we do now, and I think we'd be in a better position, a safer position, a more firm position, to come up with something that would be long-lasting.
Colleagues, we, anyone else in the queue? We have a couple options before us today. There's been a, a motion to go ahead and hire those individuals today with the approval of the city attorney and Maggie Whalen, or to Mr. Alakon's suggestion, which was to continue it a week. Mr. Labange.
As a maker of the motion, I think we hire the six, not the exempt, I think Richard very, spoke very carefully. Well, I'm just saying, if we want to try to help people, Jerry?
I, as, again, to be clear, I, I do not believe that the council can, if Mr. Box has the personality authority to hire these people.
Right.
And again, as I say here today, I'm taking it on faith that he does. He can hire these people, the council cannot direct him to hire or not hire these people if he has that authority.
Okay, so then, if I could say this, Mr. Billy, you know me a long time. Do you think Mr. Alakon's statement, as a former Personnel Analyst for the city of Los Angeles, we should continue it a week to make sure that all those, I'm anxious to try to help as others are, but his points that he made are good points?
Well, those points, again, are very valid. As I say here today, I, I don't know the answers to those questions.
All right, and listening to Mr. Alakon's statement, and also to some of the other statements that are made, I'm going to take my motion back, because I don't hear from you, Ed, 1,000 percent that Maggie Whalen says everything's okay on this. Richard made some good points, he was in the Personnel Department, he knows that, so I'm going to take my motion back and continue it a week.
I did speak to Maggie Whalen just yesterday, and she does support the program. And it is my understanding that all eight positions are exempt.
That's not the question, Mr. Box, the question is, is it?
Can you do it?
Can you do it?
Right. Right. See, I think you made good points, Mr. Cardenas said we may move something wrong.
Yes, I do have the authority if that was the question, I'm sorry.
Continue it? Continue it? Okay.
So, colleagues.
Move to continue it to the, when does Personnel meet, in the morning or the afternoon?
We're here Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday of next week.
What, when do they meet?
Part of this.
That's part of it, yes.
Okay.
This item is, this item will, has been asked to go to committee on the entire pit bull issue. This, the other issue is related to the hiring of the individuals and the legality and approve authority and process of that.
But he could do that anyway, if he does it right. August 17th is the last day we can act, August 15th is the last committee meeting for Personnel. I move, we continue it to the 17th of August.
Okay, well, the.
Well, you get a placeholder.
Okay, that, that, so colleagues, what that, what Mr. Labange is suggesting is that no one is hired until it comes back through committee. Is that correct, Mr. Labange?
Yes.
That's, that's what he's, that is what Mr. Labange was just saying. Okay. Okay, all right. So, this item is going to be continued until the 17th, unless scheduled prior to that, and it will be referred to committee.
And for clarification.
Ms., Mr. Parks, sorry.
If, like Jerry said, we have to make sure that the program is funded, even though the positions he may hire, we need that as part of the review.
Okay, and we will report back in conjunction with Personnel Department and with City Attorney.
Yes, so I, I think the, the better way is, rather than continue it to the 17th, we will refer to the committees with a placeholder for the 17th before the City Council. Okay? All right, let's, should we take a vote on that, Madam Clerk? That will be the order. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten eyes.
That will be the item. Any other items?
Madam President, we have excuses on the desk.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Gruel requests to be excused on September 21st for city business, this meets council policy.
I'll be excused, thank you.
Councilmember Labange requests to be excused for August 8th for city business, a motion is required.
Yes, Mr. Weiss moves, Mr. Smith seconds.
Councilmember Zine requests to be excused November 6th, 7th, and 9th for personal business, this meets council policy.
He will be excused.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Colleagues, we have announcements, yes, Mr. Smith?
President, are we adjourning next Wednesday for the funeral of Officer Rodriguez at 10 o'clock?
It, as I've been instructed, it's not a normal, because it was not a line of duty, there have been three individuals who have asked to be excused to go that day. If there are other individuals that would like to attend, if you let us know, then we can make an appropriate announcement.
I was going to, that's why I wanted to ask this, while we're still talking about excuses for next week, because I'd like to be excused for that, the funeral's in my district, he was an officer in my district, and I'd like to be at that funeral.
Wednesday is the North Hollywood, Monday, Monday is Mission, yes, and Wednesday is the individual from North Hollywood Station.
Which is in my district.
The North Hollywood Station?
No, they're both funerals actually in my district.
Oh, both funerals are in your, thank you. Okay, that may mean, and we'll make an announcement on Tuesday, but that probably will mean that we will not have a quorum on Wednesday, and so that is a potential, we will let you know this afternoon. Okay, thank you. Any other announcements? Yes, Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Lab, excuse me, Mr. Rosenthal.
Madam President, we have several events going on this week in the 8th District. Assemblyman Mike Davis is having a Health and Crime Prevention Fair at the California Science Center on Saturday, April, August the 4th, starts at 10:00 a.m. We also have a Community Stop the Violence March that's also Saturday, at 9:00 o'clock, they start at the Convention Center and they go to the south lawn of the City Hall. Also, one of our community groups, the Genesis Writers Group, will be having their book club on August the 5th, which is Sunday, at Holman Methodist Baptist Church at 8:00 a.m. And then the Crenshaw CAC will be having a very important meeting dealing with the Lemur Park Vision and Development Guide on August the 9th at 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at Audubon Middle School. And then the World Stage Jazz Festival, having their annual event at the Lemur Park Parking Lot on Saturday, August the 12th.
Yes, Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, Mar Vista, where I live, is having its 80th anniversary this Sunday, and I invite everybody to come to Mar Vista, the Grandview Avenue near Venice, where we actually have a farmer's market, that will be a lot of fun. The real festivities start at noon, the mayor's coming to join me there, and our community's all excited. Mar Vista, 80 years, this Sunday at the Grandview and Venice, it would be terrific. Also, on Sunday, we have something called the Blue Planet Run, and, and this is going to be a team of 20 international citizen athletes will run through Venice.